Good evening. It is eighteen hundred hours, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Placerville City Planning Commission, Tuesday, July eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Call the meeting to order if you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Present.
Chair Fran?
Here I am.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepa?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Always great to have all five members together for a meeting. Item number three, do we have any closed session report?
We do not.
Okay. Number four, adoption of the agenda. Before I entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda, I would ask commissioners to perhaps consider a reordering of the agenda. Proceeding with item nine point one, presentations, we have the Public Art Master Plan, and then go ahead and hear item ten point one, which is the extension request for the Mackinaw, and then move on to item eleven point one, Historic District Review, then take perhaps a fifteen-minute break, and then come back and consider item ten point two, which is much more of an in-depth item. This is just a thought. If the commission is willing to entertain that, the chair would entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there, is the applicant here for eleven point one, in case we had any additional questions? They may have been counting on item ten point two, taking a little bit longer. I don't know. Do you know if they were intending to attend, intending to be here?
It was my impression that they would be here, yes.
Okay. Well, having said that...
Appreciate, you know, the...
Then maybe we should not move that item ahead of ten-two, because if they're thinking, well, I don't have to be there until such and such a time, so. All right, well, then, let's go ahead and, Cheryl, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I also had a quick question regarding ten point two. On the agenda, as far as the secret determination, it only lists section fifteen three oh one and not fifteen three oh three, which is referenced in the staff report. I don't know if that's important. If that is important, then I would move to amend the agenda.
I think it's, you couldn't amend the agenda.
I would recommend we amend to add section fifteen three oh three on the secret determination on the agenda for item ten point two.
Be prepared to make the motion, sir?
Yes, I will move to adopt the agenda with the change to item ten point two that I recommended, and also moving, so not moving eleven point one, but you made another recommendation for...
No, we'll keep the order.
Keep the order as is, okay. I would move as amended to adopt the agenda.
Second?
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, hearing none, the agenda is approved. Consent calendar, items on the consent calendar are five point one, approval of the minutes from the meeting of June twenty. Could I have a motion for approval, adoption of the consent calendar, I guess?
Motion to adopt the minutes and consent calendar?
Second.
I will second.
And second, before I take the vote, any member of the public wish to comment on item five point one, regards to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
And I will abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Keeney. And a reminder to use microphones, please, when voting up or down. Item number six, items pulled from the agenda, none. Item number seven, items of interest to the public, public comment, non-agenda items, this is an opportunity for members of the public to bring forward to the commission items which would be in the commission's purview, but which are not on the agenda. Please be advised that the commission cannot take action on any items brought before us. You'll limit your comments to three minutes, and just as a reminder, to be respectful, and no comments about the public or staff are permitted. Anyone in the public wish to address the commission on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, move on to item eight, written communications for non-agenda items. Do we have any written communications?
We have no written communications, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Then it moves us on to item nine point one, presentation by the El Dorado Arts and Culture Public Art Master Plan.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners. I think most of you know me, Teri Lamontec.
Welcome.
Director at Arts and Culture, El Dorado. So Pierre kindly asked me to make this presentation to you. Some years back, I started talking with city leadership about public art, and that was, well, I guess it was two thousand and twenty-two, it seems like several years ago. Anyway, we started talking about the need for a public art plan. A public art master plan is something that municipalities across the country have as part of their foundational documents. And so, as you can see, I put, just as a reminder, one of the things that was sort of the genesis for these conversations, which was the proposed mural on the mosquito underpass, which came to a sort of untimely end, but not without a lot of public comment and back-and-forth discussion. The reason it's really in everyone's best interest to have a plan is then you have policy and guidelines in place, and with public art, everyone has an opinion, and that's good, that's what makes us human. But especially for elected officials or you commissioners, when public art may come before you to be decided, you know, it's almost impossible not to put your own aesthetic opinions onto it. But if you have a plan with guidelines, then you can point to the guidelines, and I'm not saying it's going to make it completely easier, but you will have a framework to refer So I wrote to the National Endowment for the Arts, asking for a grant to underwrite the plan, and they approved that request. And so you can see, here's funding the plan. We were awarded thirty thousand dollars from the NEA, and our organization, Arts and Culture, will underwrite fifteen thousand dollars of the total sixty, and we have a request before the city of Placerville for another fifteen thousand dollars. So what is public art? Now, I chose just some favorite images from the internet to illustrate some of these slides, but it's simply art in public places, and as I say there, public art can take a wide range of forms, it can be temporary or permanent, it can even be performance, it can be integrated into the architecture, it can be living art, and something that we will talk about a lot in Placerville is, you see the statement, it often interprets the history of the place and its people. And in our initial meetings with our consulting team, of course, that has come up loud and clear with the input that we have gotten. So why even have public art, right? As you can see, I just mentioned, public art instills meaning and a greater sense of identity and understanding, and it creates a connection between the viewer and the built environment. It does have an impact on economic growth and sustainability, tourism. I personally find one of the most exciting things about public art is the sense of discovery. You know, we all know, we only know what we know, and we know what we've seen, but sometimes, you know, you can walk around a corner and confront a piece of public art that you've never seen before, and it can really just cause you to think about something in a slightly different way. And the most important statement on this slide is that this process, which will involve community input and will be scaled appropriately to the size of our town, and we really want this process to be trusted by all participants, which is why, and here's a note for your calendars, on Monday, July thirty-first, right here in Town Hall at five-thirty, we will have our first public meeting, our first community meeting, where the consultants will listen to, they're going to really run the meeting, but they will listen to all of everyone's voice and hear what's important to people in public art. So this project is an element of the city's strategic plan, under maintain and improve quality of life. It says provide and maintain vibrant public spaces, events, and programs, and ensure a well-designed and protected city infrastructure. And I will be presenting also to the Recreation and Parks Commission, because they will be an integral part of this process, as will planning. So we were very fortunate to land a top public art consulting team, really one of the most respected consultants in the country, Barbara Goldstein, you see her picture there. I don't know if you can see the slide, but she wrote a seminal book on the subject. It's called Public Art by the Book. I've worked with Barbara before, and I convinced her to come to Placerville, and she actually knew the community, because a relative of hers was at Escatton. She's based in San Jose, she has served as not only the Director of Public Art for the city of San Jose, but also Director of Public Art for the city of Seattle. And if you've ever been up there, you know they have some pretty impressive public artworks. And so there's just a little quote from their website, but they really talk about building on existing cultural assets, valuing the past while welcoming the future. And that's something that, I promise you, we will explore as fully as possible in their public outreach, their public meetings, and the work that they're going to do, the draft proposal, et cetera. So there's our timeline. I do feel like I'm sort of running, just like that clock on legs. This is a basic framework of the timeline, and I have my notes with me of more specific elements under each time block there that you see, but we will end up, the goal is to be done with this by the end of the year, December thirty-first, when, after, you know, thorough review and vetting by city council, hopefully they will adopt the plan before the end of the year. So the last slide, I just had fun with, because I wanted to remind everyone that there's all kinds of public art. The Statue of Liberty is public art, right? And so is Mount Rushmore. So that is really my short presentation. What questions can I answer for you?
Thank you very much for the presentation. As Chair of the Commission, I'm very excited and honored to be a member of the Steering Committee.
And thank you for that.
It's going to be great. And so, any questions or comments for our guests here, from members of the Commission? Commissioner Carter?
I guess I was envisioning, when Commissioner Fran brought this up, I thought this was going to be more mural-based public art, but now I see your presentation, one of my favorite displays of public art is the metal sculptures in Sebastopol. I'm not sure if you've seen them, they're absolutely phenomenal. What do you envision as the different mediums, metal art, murals? How do you see this playing out in different mediums?
Well, first of all, I want to emphasize that this isn't Arts and Culture El Dorado's plan, it's not even really the city of Placerville's plan, it's the community's plan. And, you know, I would almost immediately go right into my aesthetic opinion, just as I was talking about before. Murals are a really easy and quick place to go, and that's already come up in several of our conversations. You know, I think we're so early in the process, I think it would be getting ahead of ourselves to envision, but that's exactly, so you have to come. You have to come on Monday, the thirty-first, and say exactly that, and I hope all the rest of you will come as well, because we really want to hear from everyone. Vote with your feet, and let your voice be heard.
And if I may, just to comment on that, because I'm no world traveler by any stretch, but I was mentioning in our first meeting, when I was in Rome, one of the things that I loved so much in Rome is there was freshwater fountains, like everywhere, for people and for dogs, and they were often in like stone grottos or whatever, just on the street, and I can, and they were these beautiful copper, you know, pipes, and they were old, right? And they struck me as art, and so art can be as much functional as it can be just static, interpretive, it could be, it could be all manner of things, and I think we had a lot of really great ideas in that first, that first meeting. So I think the world is our oyster, it's our canvas.
Certainly.
It's a canvas, right, a blank canvas right now for us to...
Well, especially when we talk about art and design, you know, in the same sentence. So, you know, it sounds like design was what kind of spoke to you in those bowls, so again, you know...
And then the big flowered dog outside the Guggenheim Museum in Bilbao, completely, you know, all covered with flowers, completely different. But Commissioner Keeney, you had a comment, please?
You said something about it being the community's plan, but is this plan going to be focused on the city of Placerville, or if someone wanted a grant to install art outside the city limits, would this plan still be applicable, or how far in scope, or how big in scope?
So this plan will be adopted by the city council, and so it will belong to the community, but it will be the, it will be the city's plan. However, you know, I hope it's just a ripple, you know, a rock thrown into the pond. I've been asked by Supervisor Thomas to be on a committee, you guys know the new roundabout up in Camino, the Caltrans project, so we're looking at a sculpture for that roundabout. Now, that's outside of Placerville city limits, but I really hope that, you know, people will be inspired, number one, trust the process, number two, and, you know, just embrace the concept of art in our community and not see it as a sort of a block, you know, a blockade to thinking, just a little more expansively about what's possible.
Other commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Lepa?
I guess my questions would be about the historic districts that we have now. There's several of them, and there's been discussion for a number of years about having the downtown area declared an historic district. That's not something that's been done yet, or is it being considered? So how would you reconcile the two? If you have a plan for art, and then you have a plan for historic preservation, how do you reconcile those two? And should it be the other way around, looking at that other issue first, and then art for the downtown area?
So have you ever seen that giant silver bean in Chicago, outside of those, the big office buildings? It's this giant, it looks like a big kidney bean, you're nodding. Would we put that on Main Street? Of course not. You know, public art should complement and reflect the setting that it's in. As I said, a little element of discovery is, you know, welcome by myself, but, and I love your questions, but they're not questions that I can answer, because I'm not writing the plan, I'm not choosing the art, I'm not making the suggestions. I might say a few things at a public meeting, probably leave it to most of you, but Barbara is a, she will listen, she's a very good listener, she's a very good consultant, and she has met with a key, a few key stakeholders already to listen to their concerns about things like historic preservation, historic district. So you have to be there, Kirk, just come to the meeting, and, you know, get that into the plan. That can go in the plan, if that's what the consultants hear loud and clear.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lepa?
Yeah, I just have a question about maintenance. So would it be under the city's purview to, once installed, whatever mechanism of which it is, would it be under the city's responsibility if something were to happen to it or it needed addressing?
I think with each contract, with each proposal, that has to be written in, so, you know, I imagine a very thorough and robust process that will be recommended in the plan exactly for things like that. So, you know, paragraph sixteen, section seven, will say, each piece of public art must have, it must be called out as to who's responsible for maintenance and, you know, cleaning and anything else. So again, I feel like a little bit of a broken record, but that will, that should and will go in the plan.
Perfect. I just, I'm in total support of the project and really excited to see what comes out of it. Thank you.
We are, too.
And I'll have some more comments on this under item ten-two, but thank you so much for the presentation. I want to encourage everyone within the sound of my voice to actively engage, to be a participant. This is for your community, so if you care, show up and contribute.
I had one last question, to wrap this up. If someone would not be able to attend that meeting on the thirty-first, could they submit a comment to Arts and Culture? How would you want that information directed?
We have a landing page on our website now, and you can sign up for updates. Second point is Barbara and her team will be doing other meetings on this upcoming trip, they will be, they'll have a table at the farmer's market, for example, as kind of a pop-up, but they will be coming back on more than one occasion, so we really, I can't emphasize enough that we are doing as thorough a job as possible on outreach and promotion. We're working with Pierre and Teri Zeller on promoting it through city channels, social media, and other avenues, so there will be more than one opportunity.
And I would imagine that individuals could also submit comments. Pierre, you're on the Steering Committee, are you not?
No, I'm not.
Oh, you're not, I thought I saw your name.
I'm not on the Steering Committee, but I'll be serving as staff.
Serving as staff, so members of the public could certainly send comments to your agency that could make their way?
Certainly.
Okay, great, so a lot of opportunities then. Okay.
You know, I'll just close by saying, the first word in this project is public, and that's what we really intend it to be. So I will see all of you on Monday, July thirty-first, right back here at Town Hall.
Super. Thank you so much for your presentation. This is going to be a great thing for the city.
I'm going to leave this right here.
All right, excellent. All right, then, we'll move on then to our environmental assessments, public hearings. We'll begin with item ten point one. This is site plan review, twenty-one dash oh three, variance twenty-one oh one, and variance twenty-one oh two. This is the Mackinaw Hotel project, and the item is a request for a one-year extension. Ms. Rivas, you have the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Fran, members of the Planning Commission. The entitlements for the Mackinaw Hotel were granted on January fourth of two thousand and twenty-two by the Planning Commission for the site plan review and for two variance requests for the project. The project involves construction of a hundred and twelve-room hotel and roadway improvements for the property located at three zero zero one, Jakeway Road, near the intersection of Point View Drive and US Highway fifty in the eastern portion of Placerville, in Smith Flat area. The variance requests were to allow an increase in building height and an increase in the allowable number of compact parking spaces. So under the site plan review provisions of the city code, the Planning Commission may consider a request for a time extension if the request is filed prior to expiration. The expiration was eighteen months following its approval. For a time extension request, the commissioner's role does not involve a reconsideration of the previous commission approvals. The commission must consider any changes to the city code since the project was approved that may affect the project and any changes proposed by the applicant. A timely request was filed on July the fifth, the date of the expiration of the entitlements. No changes to the project are proposed, there have been no changes to the city code that would affect the project since it was approved in two thousand and twenty-two. The request is to extend for twelve months the site plan review and the two variances approved for the project. If granted, twelve months would begin retroactively from July fifth, the new expiration date then would be July fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. The project conditions approved in two thousand and twenty-two would remain part of the project approval. The environmental analysis for the project adopted by the commission in twenty-two also remains in effect. Staff does recommend making the findings in A, B, and C that were provided on page three of the staff report, and then grant a twelve-month extension for the site plan review and the two variance requests. The commission's decision is appealable to the city council within ten calendar days. Staff would just add that considerable effort has been made on the part of the applicant. They have submitted building plans, which have already gone through first review by the Building Division. Comments have already been submitted to them, we're awaiting their second submittal of the plans, both onsite and offsite. Engineering, civil plans have been submitted to the Engineering Department and are currently under review, and I believe comments have been submitted to them, so the project is slowly but surely moving forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions the commission has at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions of staff by commissioners? The chair is favorably disposed to granting the request. All right. Commissioner Lepa, you had a question or a comment? Commissioner Smith, you had a question or a comment?
I was just going to move to...
Before we get, I appreciate that, before we get there, I think this is a public hearing, so I have to open it up to the public for any questions or comments. Is the applicant here, the agent? And you're not compelled to come before us if you want, that's up to you, but I'm going ahead and I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone that wants to speak on this project, generally we accept the proponents first before we see the antagonists.
Sure, I'll just introduce myself. You may have seen me previously before this council. I'm Stephen Smith, I'm COO of Eat, Drink, and Sleep, based in San Diego, and one of the partners working on the development of the Mackinaw Hotel, and we appreciate your consideration of this extension.
I think I speak for everyone here in the city that we remain very excited for the project, so.
We're very excited as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address this item? Any comments? Okay, terrific. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and hopefully action. As I indicated, I'm favorably disposed.
I had one question of staff that I actually forgot to ask. What are the opportunities beyond this for further extensions? Is there...
I believe that, I believe the code allows up to five years' worth of extensions.
So this would be the first of their possible five extensions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Extension necessary, yes.
Commissioner Smith, you...
I'll just move for the extension of one year.
And in your motion, sir, if you'd be kind enough to maybe mention the staff report on page three of the staff report, some of the items there, it's kind of a pro forma we have.
I just addressed it.
How about, how about I'll do this, you can second it.
I'll put my...
I go ahead and move that we approve the request for the extension, adopting the staff report as part of the public record. The finding of fact is indicated on page three of the staff report, Roman numeral two, and in Roman numeral three, granting a twelve-month extension of the SPR twenty-one oh three, variance twenty-one oh one, variance twenty-one oh two, from July five two zero two three, going twelve months to expiration of July five two zero two four. Subject to the condition is indicated in the staff report that all of the conditions of approval that the commission approved remain in effect. Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. As staff indicated, this is appealable within ten days to the city council. Thank you so much, and again, continued good luck with your project, we're very excited for it. All right, then, that'll move us on then to item ten dash two. This is conditional use permit, CUP twenty-three dash zero two, site plan review, twenty-three dash oh nine, variance twenty-three oh three, the Apple Farm Place, consideration of conditional use permit, site plan review, and variance for the properties located in the highway commercial airport over... for the properties located in the highway commercial airport overlay to remodel the existing Apple Farm Place retail shopping center formerly known as the Carriage Trade Center. Two, modification of building elevations for the entire center. Three, approve a master sign plan for the entire center, including two pole signs. Four, revise parking configuration, landscaping, and exterior lighting. And four, find the project category exempt from the California CEQA 15301 and?
15303.
And 15303. And Kristin, I believe you have the staff report.
So, SPR 23-09, CUP 23-02, and variance 23-03 is a request to modify the existing shopping center formerly the Carriage Trade Center, now Apple Farm Place. I've provided elevations on the screen. The project area includes two parcels spanning over nine acres, both zoned highway commercial airport overlay. The larger parcel is split-zoned with the up slope portion to the south behind the center zoned R16 with access from Lane Court. The shopping center is comprised of two buildings approximately 70,000 square feet. The larger of the two buildings is addressed 1426 and 21480 Broadway, and is just over 60,000 square feet. The project, as proposed, includes building elevation modifications to 1426 to 1480 Broadway to rural farm craftsman-style architecture. This is achieved through the addition of gables above the entrances of Dollar Tree Harbor Freight and Grocery Outlet, the addition of front facade parapets to a portion of the units in order to increase front-facing height and create variation in roof heights, giving an overall appearance that the building is comprised of several buildings built side by side, and the use of metal roofing, corrugated metal siding, stonework columns, board and batten siding, and dimensional composition roofing material. The project also includes the addition of a sealand container behind Grocery Outlet to be used for storage that will be painted to match the exterior of Grocery Outlet, a new paving overlay and reconfiguration of parking layout with a total of 351 parking spaces, the addition of landscaping to the shopping center, new lighting fixtures to the front and rear of the building, and a master sign plan for the entire center, including sign criteria for each tenant. Signage for the center includes wall signs and two pole signs. And I have the pole signs up on the screen. So, summary of project analysis. A detailed analysis of the project in its entirety is provided in the staff report dated July 18th, 2023, beginning on page 13. Of note, staff has prepared and distributed a memorandum dated today following distribution of the staff report for the request. Staff noted that analysis of proposed exterior lighting was not included. As such, staff prepared a brief analysis and recommended condition of approval to be included for the proposed exterior lighting. In summary, it is the opinion of staff that the request is exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, sections 15301 and 15303, in that the project includes repair and minor alteration of an existing private structure that will result in negligible or no expansion to the use, and that it includes the modification of an existing accessory structure, pole sign, and construction of a second 18-foot pole sign accessory to the primary use. The proposed modifications to the exterior of the main building of the shopping center to rural farm craftsman architecture would be complementary to the adjacent buildings and will improve pedestrian orientation while maintaining the building relationship to pedestrian pathways, maintaining and improving recessed entries and covered walkways. The proposed reconfiguration of parking stalls meets the required number pursuant to zoning ordinance section 10-4-4, parking and loading, and is within the 20% maximum of compact parking. Of note, a revised site plan is required based on Engineering Department's comments regarding city right-of-way to confirm that the parking directly adjacent to Broadway will not be located within the right-of-way. The proposed signage, proposed under master sign plan, conditional use permit, and variance is appropriate given the size of the shopping center, the 1,160 lineal feet of frontage along Broadway, and the need to clearly identify tenants in a clear and consistent manner. And lastly, let me pull it up, hold on one second. Thank you for bearing with me trying to make sure I have all of these up. And lastly, that the landscaping is not a requirement of the project as the project is the reimaging of an existing structure and resurfacing and restriping of an existing parking lot, but is being added to the project area to benefit architectural features and provide shading to parking and other paved areas. Staff has reviewed the preliminary landscape plan and has provided recommendations, specifically that landscape be finalized following the proposed future project analysis under site plan review for the second building to the east and for the future fast food drive-through. Overall, staff finds that the project request is consistent with the Placerville General Plan, zoning ordinance, and development guide. As such, staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt the staff report and memorandum dated July 18th, 2023, as part of the public record, adopt the findings in support of SPR 23-09, adopt the findings in support of conditional use permit 23-02, adopt the findings of support, in support of variance 23-03, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings included in the staff report and memorandum, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's report on 23-09, CUP 23-02, and variance 23-03.
Thank you, Kristin, and appreciate the relative brevity of the report. The material that we need is, is in the staff report. That's actually a reference back to Andrew, who probably would have read the entire report verbatim, and we'd still be listening to it. He was very thorough. I say that with all great respect, so thank you for that. All right. Commissioner Smith, you have your microphone on. Okay, but that's not to preclude, comments of commissioners of staff, and I do have a couple. Commissioner Carter, go ahead.
Could you clarify the statement you just made regarding the landscaping on the parking lot, that it's not required, but it's being included? Yeah, I didn't see that anywhere on the staff report, so that's new information for me, so I just like some clarification on that.
The review of landscaping is basically limited to what was originally approved in the 1973 site plan review for the project, so it was very minimal landscaping. I think some of the landscaping is on the frontage from Broadway on the project. So, we have an existing parking lot, so really, the city has limited discretion on this because the parking lot is existing. Staff is grateful that the project applicant is doing some extensive landscaping, which would require irrigation. So, we can't require, like, say, for example, if the applicant wasn't proposing any landscaping, we would not have the ability to require landscaping of the parking lot since it is existing. So, if the applicant was imposing or proposing new square footage that required additional parking lot or a new parking lot, then the new parking lot would be required to current standards. So, staff looks at the landscaping in terms of, is it zero-scape? Is it drought tolerant? They'll have to submit an irrigation plan that's stamped by a licensed landscape architect to meet city code and state codes requiring reduction of water. So, that's the limit of the landscaping.
If I could pick up on that, and thank you, because that was one of my main questions and actually concerns. The parking lot, when it is redone, will have to be brought up to current code standards, right?
The applicant is proposing to restripe, so we will make sure that all the parking stalls meet the requirements and the.
It's not going to be repaved, though?
They're going to resurface it.
Resurface it, but, but not to the standards of 1973, they're going to be to the standards of 2023, right?
Yes.
So, why, why does landscaping not fall into that same requirement?
Because it's an existing parking lot.
But the existing parking lot's going to be resurfaced to newer standards, I guess, is my question.
Parking lots, a lot of parking lots get resurfaced. The city doesn't have the authority to go in there and require landscaping for the resurfacing of the parking lot.
Okay, if, if I may just continue on this. Do we have any idea what the timeframe is then for the application on the second parcel? Because if I understand the staff report correctly, that will be the trigger for the landscaping requirement, et cetera, for the entire project.
Very limited. I think any landscaping would be associated with the development of the new pad.
I'm sorry, and I, maybe I didn't refer, I didn't phrase my correction correctly. It's my understanding, it's my understanding that we're not going to require, the landscaping that's proposed, the big, the big plan, doesn't kick in until the two parcels are merged, right? And then the, an application for the future fast food restaurant is submitted and some other things. Did I get that wrong? I thought that was the trigger for the landscaping component.
It'll be a trigger for frontage improvements, but not for landscaping.
Yeah, we're, we're just holding off on finalizing the landscaping because we are on the second parcel, nothing has been entitled.
Okay, so when will the landscaping on the main parcel go in? I guess that's my question.
I guess I would leave that to a question to be imposed on the applicant.
Okay, great. That's, forgive my lack of understanding on, okay, good, good enough. Sorry, Commissioner Carter, did you have an additional comment? Commissioner Keeney?
I have several questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. As long as we're still talking about the landscaping plan, I appreciate that staff reviewed and made some suggestions regarding the trees. I have some other specific requests, so if and, you know, when we get to the point where staff is reviewing that, I'd like to have a little more discussion. Some native trees do better in parking lot situations than others, and so rather than, you know, dwell on specifics tonight, I'll just, we'd like to put a marker down that I acknowledge that this would be a staff-level approval because of the triggers involved, but I just request that perhaps we have some sort of discussion about that. So, I'm looking, so for the landscaping to succeed and look the best it can, it's a, you know, it's a very difficult environment. I think we all appreciate, you know, how stark and, and hard it is as it exists. Having said that, I'd like to move on to follow up on parking. I am always concerned about having enough parking. There are some very minor discrepancies. The staff report states 351 are required. We were provided a sheet that's labeled A3, and on there, it's, the subtitle, I think, is something about circulation. That plan shows, or states that there would be 348, and so that's a minor difference. My main concern, though, is the distribution of the stalls themselves. So, can you clarify that, or is that something I need to, maybe the applicant would be better positioned? I, what I want to know is, of the approximately 350 stalls, will some of them have to be over on the eastern parcel, which is, the last three digits are 028?
Yes, parking is on both parcels. And staff did an estimation, an estimate and account today following our conversation, and I can confirm at least on site plan shown on the screen here, sheet S2, there are 351 stalls.
So, on S2, there are 350, because I wasn't going to count those.
I, I did, actually, and calculated it out, so.
Okay, so there, there is. For all 350 required stalls, but it requires both parcels?
Both parcels, yes.
Thank you, and does anybody else have a question about parking? I have, I wanted to move on to.
I actually, I have one question.
Sure, I'll, I have another question on a different matter, so let's finish up with parking.
It occurred, pardon, it occurs to me that in this modern age, should not some consideration for electric vehicle charging stations also be included as a component of the parking?
I believe there's a building code requirement when it comes to building permit, is that correct, Pierre?
That, that is correct. Okay, so, so while we have compact spaces called out, we don't have the electric vehicle, but the code rule require a certain number of those.
We'll have to look at that because, really, they're not, they're not increasing any square footage of the center. So, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's going to trigger the requirement under the building code to provide for electric, so I think that would be up to the applicant to provide that.
Or, can we condition it?
I don't, I don't believe you can compel the applicant to do that.
Okay, all right. It just seems that at this point in our history, where we're at and where we're going, it almost seems like it's something that we need to have happen. Okay, thank you, that was my question. Other commissioners have questions on parking?
Just on, a couple of things on parking. One is, what about the Broadway plan for expansion, or the would-be sidewalks? There's nothing indicated here about how that would interplay.
Yeah, the current proposal now, again, the applicant, at least on, on this particular parcel, isn't increasing any square footage, so there's no requirement for frontage improvements. However, when that Phase 2 of the project comes forward and they build a restaurant, that will trigger street frontage improvements.
What about the idea of car canopies that are existent in ever parking lots that have been installed? Is there a requirement to do that for this parking area?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Parking canopies, like you have at Walmart, for example?
For car canopies?
Yeah, covering trees or canopies like you have over at Walmart for parking.
Are those not solar? That's solar.
Those are solar.
I think, I think that's why they have the canopies, because it's solar. If they didn't have the solar, I'm not sure you'd have the canopies.
That's the question.
Yeah, there's nothing preventing the applicant for, you know, installing solar, but that's not a requirement of the project. It's nothing that the city can require the applicant to do.
Commissioner Carter, a question on parking, I think, right?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Keeney, for bringing this up. I hadn't even thought about this. So, the calculation for the parking requirements is including the second parcel and the future building F2 that has not been permitted or even thought about at this point. How are we calculating the parking on a building that hasn't even been?
We are not. So, parking is just looking at the existing center and what's, so the building to the east and the building behind you on the.
But you said that the spots that were, the 351 spots include the spots that are in that second parcel?
Correct, but we are not calculating parking using the fast food restaurant pad. We are just looking at the square footage of the existing buildings.
Then, I understand that, but then they would, they would have to add parking for the future fast food restaurant. Where are they going to put this additional parking if they've already utilized all this space for the buildings that are currently existing? Where's that parking going to go when that building is approved? And, you know, you know, I guess, does that question make sense?
I guess I'll just add that we didn't analyze a future project that hasn't been submitted. And, and if they do provide, if they do propose a fast food restaurant with a drive-through, we're going to require, you know, a traffic study to show queuing and a lot of different factors we're going to look at, that we're not looking at with this application.
So, I, for clarification, the parking proposed for what we're reviewing this evening is 300 and some odd number, but the total parking that exists there presently is 400 and some odd. So, that difference is what's located over on the other section, right? Do we not know? But 300 and some odd that's, that we're considering tonight is sufficient for the buildings that we're considering, is that right? Okay, I think that, at the end of the day, that, that's the main thing.
Right.
They'll, they'll have to figure that out when they get to the other side. Okay? All right. Any other questions on parking? You're not satisfied with that answer?
Not at all.
All right, well, we can ask the applicant then.
Exactly, I'll wait.
All right, no problem. Commissioner Keeney, back to you, I think.
Onto a different topic, and I think Commissioner Smith started to touch on this, the senior engineers' report, attachment nine, a couple of items on there. Item three was a statement regarding the improved pedestrian access and safety. So, at this point, there, there's no discussion about that in the project before us tonight, but the engineers' report, city engineers' report did touch on it, and I'm, I am concerned about. And I'm, I am concerned about pedestrian safety and access. So at what point would that be addressed? When, when and if there's a proposal for the other parcel, would that trigger improving pedestrian access?
When you say pedestrian access, I'm not exactly sure what you mean by pedestrian.
Give me a second to pull up that attachment, and I can maybe, maybe I misread what the engineer's comment was. Thank you. Wow, you are so, this is scary. And I see Commissioner Carter might have the same concern. Item three, specific review comments on the site plan. Number three, onsite pedestrian path of travel currently crosses the parking lot and ties into Broadway at the middle of the site, where a retaining wall currently exists between Broadway and the parking lot. There is no sidewalk on Broadway. A pedestrian pathway would be more beneficial on the west side of the site where most pedestrians enter from, and where the pathway could be closer to the existing transit stop. All pedestrian pathways must be ADA compliant. So that is my concern on Ms. McConnell's report, item three. So improving that pedestrian access, is that not, just like the landscaping plan, is it not triggered because of the project before us tonight, but maybe comes into play later?
Yes, I believe it's not triggered. We are looking at accessibility, not exactly ADA. That applies to public buildings and the street, so if they do the curb gutter and sidewalk, that would be ADA compliant, but they do have to provide for accessibility requirements along the building so that a handicap person can get from the parking lot safely to all of the buildings.
My other question was also from the engineer's report, item six. She talks about an abandoned driveway, and I saw that on one of the site plans, the specific site plan for the eastern side of the project. There is, labeled on there is abandoned driveway. At what point is it going to be abandoned? It's very close to the outlined future site. And so is it going to be abandoned as part of the remodel we're thinking about tonight, or is it going to be officially abandoned in conjunction with development on the other, the eastern side of the project area?
Yeah, I would defer that question to the project applicant. I believe that's on the other parcel, which we don't have a complete set of plans for that yet. It's still undecided.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Smith, did you have questions for staff?
A couple. I was curious about Roman numeral nine, the 10-foot-tall poles for a pole sign. A number of years ago, it must have been at least a dozen, the city very aggressively went after about 80 properties that had pole signs, one of them taken down, suggesting by city policy that they weren't needed. Why have you done it here? Just because the size of the property? One, when you're going up Broadway, you look on your right, you already see this large complex. And on your left side is an ancient Mewoc village, an historic location. And so your view of that village is blocked. I just don't know why you would have 10-foot-tall signs permitted when on the same location, there was a pole sign taken down about a dozen years ago, required for the same property, albeit a restaurant just next door. That's the question.
I believe the JED sign was 40 feet in height, and that sign was abandoned, and so the city required it to be removed. So earlier in your comment, when you stated that the city aggressively goes after these pole signs, the city does aggressively go after abandoned pole signs, because they're basically, as long as they're in use, they're considered illegal non-conforming use, such as the pole sign on this, that's before you, that they're reimaging, that's 40 feet in height. So, you know, staff doesn't have the ability to require that sign to be removed or anything because it's not abandoned, it's in use, and the applicant is reimaging the sign to better fit, the reimaging for the complex. What they're proposing is a shorter sign, 18 feet in height. So the code reads that any sign that's over 10 feet does require a conditional use permit and a site plan review for that, or a variance for that sign. So the commission then has the ability to approve or deny that sign. It's your prerogative because a variance is required. So you're making special findings that it is necessary to have an 18-foot sign for the advertising of this shopping center. Staff feels it is a very large shopping center, and it's appropriate to have a sign at the opposite end of the shopping center. Staff is unaware of a village just being obscured by that sign.
On this point, Pierre, is it, is it safe to say that the 40-foot sign on the western edge really serves the highway commercial need, but then on the eastern end, where we're going to have the smaller sign, is really going to serve the needs of folks coming into town, you know, from, say, Newtown Road, et cetera, that aren't necessarily, because you can't see that from the highway, and so it's serving kind of a different need, and it is a very large center. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes, staff agrees with that assessment.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Smith, any other questions for staff? Commissioner Lepper? Okay, thank you. In case my opening remarks didn't reflect it, I think the project is striking. So I just, just wanted to get that on the record. I read there's a lot of fantastic things with this. I wanted to just touch on the murals for staff, and this kind of almost goes back to our presentation earlier this evening. And my, God, I hate, I hate to even say this, but, you know, we live in the world we live in. What, who's responsible if these beautiful murals are vandalized? How does that, how does that going to work? And it's not just for this. This actually kind of relates to our, you know, our art discussion earlier, so President Broder, but whose responsibility is it going to be? Is it going to be the property owner, the applicant, is the city going to have a relationship? What's, what do you envision with that, or is that something we don't know yet?
It would be the responsibility of the property owner.
Okay.
So let's just say, for example, the property is subject to vandalism, and people spray paint graffiti over the signs. The city does enforce graffiti. We require property owners to remove graffiti immediately. We would hope that wouldn't happen typically on large murals like this. There are certain types of coatings that are placed on the mural. For example, some time ago, and it was talked briefly by Terry Lamontcheck of the Culture Eldorado regarding a mural that was proposed on one of the supporting structures under the Highway 50 at Mesquite. And there were very strict requirements by Caltrans, because that particular mural would have become the property of the state of California, and Caltrans would have required, it would have entered into a maintenance agreement. And there's a special coating that's placed over the mural. So again, that would be a question of the applicant, but I would assume that they're going to have a special coating to protect the murals.
Okay, great. And I don't want to dissuade the applicant from moving forward with this enhancement, because I think it really is more beyond value added. Okay, Commissioner Carter, you had a question?
Yeah, if I could ask one more question regarding the signs. This 18-foot-tall sign, the placement, looking at this sign placement that you've given us. I guess I'm having a problem with the, with the separate APNs not being merged yet. So we're being asked to approve a sign on this second parcel that is not really under consideration on tonight's agenda. How is this working that we're going to, being asked to approve a sign on this second parcel when it's not even part of this item?
Because you're considering a master sign plan, and many shopping centers are composed of many different parcels. So it's really, from staff's perspective, it's not a concern for us.
The sign refers to everything that exists, right, in the center, and the applicant owns the property. And so they, you know, certainly when something else is developed there, an additional sign, an additional sign, that raises the question. So when the fast food restaurant goes in, they won't get an additional pole sign, will they? Will they have to be part of this pole sign and the other pole sign? Or will, let's say a McDonald's is going in there, just for sake of discussion. I don't envision McDonald's putting in a third pole sign there. They'd have to use the existing pole sign, right?
I would agree with that. I don't think staff would support another pole sign. You would probably see a sign on the restaurant building.
Sure.
And then you would see whatever restaurant logo on these signs.
Okay, all right, yeah, that makes, that makes sense. Yeah. Okay, great. Well, this is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. First, of course, we would like to invite the applicant or their agent to come forward. I think we have a number of questions for them, and thank you for being here. And again, thank you for this proposal. I think visually, it looks fantastic. And then we'll grill you from there.
Sounds good. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I want to thank Kristen and Pierre for a phenomenally good job putting this together in not a whole long period of time, because we have time constraints working with tenants, et cetera, with respective deliveries, opening dates, things of that nature. And they did a fantastic job. And I could just tell you from Pierre's standpoint, we've probably worked with each other more than 30 years at different areas in the county at one time or another. But they're doing a great job, so thank you. Yeah, we, I've actually lived in the area about 37 years now. I've owned a piece of property right above this, on the other side of Highway 50, off of Stonecrest Road, for about 25 years. I've done other developments in the community here in the county, and I've watched this project basically decline and decay for the last 40 years. So we just felt that as a development company and as a resident of the community, we need to do something about it, because that end of town cannot continue to go the way it's going. And we are also very excited about the Mackinac Hotel coming in there, because I think that these projects play into one another. They will create more of an environment on that end of town that people feel comfortable in and have access to different retail, food sources, things of that nature, that I think could actually lend quite well for each other. I'll just kind of address some of the, some of the things and the concerns that I've heard with respect to signage. Signage is critically important for national tenants. They want to be able to have the public know where they're at, regardless of which direction they're coming. For a center of this nature, with that much frontage, actually, two signs is relatively small. Most of the tenants that we've talked to wanted a third entry because of the length of the center. When you have 1,100 feet essentially almost between driveways, that's a long way. If you look at other projects, for instance, the McDonald's and Autozone on Missouri Flat Road, that entire parcel is 400 feet long, and you have an entrance right in the middle of it, and you have a signalized intersection on the end of it, another entrance in the back of it. Access is really important to national tenants, and there are certain boxes they have to check whether they'll approve a project or not. That's one of them. So signage is critically important. What we've tried to do is look at the existing signs and say, is that what we want to add to, if you will, another tenant? And then basically just deal with storefront signage and things of that nature. What we felt was a better approach was to actually rebuild a sign, so that that sign would have the new translucent panels on it for the anchor tenants, et cetera, and then have shingles on it also for the other tenants that are in the site. So the question that came up with respect to a fast food going in, we don't know who that's going to be yet. We're talking to several individuals, but yeah, they would be on the signs that we build. They would not have new pole signs. We don't want just one-off pole signs for a single tenant. They'd be on those other signs. They'd also have signage on their building, because they have a brand that people recognize, so that's critically important. Same with the Harbor Freight that's, that we have under lease right now. They have a signage program for their store, because it's their identity. Okay, when people see it, they know that that's who that is. Whether they could read it or not, they look at the color, they say, that's Harbor Freight. So, and I can say that most of the males in Eldorado County are quite excited about that. So having said that, with respect to the other concerns, parking lot, landscaping, yeah, we're not compelled to landscape by the, by the community, by the, by the city, but I'm compelled to landscape because I don't like the way it looks. So that's where my emphasis comes in, because I, and my architect will share, I'm probably too aesthetic. It's got to look good, or I don't like it. I got to drive by it. I'm actually going to be officing there. We're moving our office from Missouri Flat Road to this site, because I feel that if I can't be there, why should anybody else? So I'm an officer. We're going to be there on site from a management standpoint, et cetera. But as we look at it, you know, we have basically about a dozen trees along the frontage of Broadway right now. We'll have 60 there when we're done on the site, so 500% increase in tree coverage, okay? Shading requirements, it's in it. We won't be able to do a shade calculation, because if I needed to do an actual shade calculation, I couldn't park the people I need to park there, because I had to put too many trees in. I mean, that's just reality. It's not a new site, so we don't have that liberty to have a blank palette, to just start drawing on and do what would be required today, okay? Which we're doing on other projects on Missouri Flat, other shopping centers there. It's just a totally different format that way. We have to basically deal with the hand we're dealt on this project and make the very best of it that we can. And we think that what we're doing with it is doing just that. It's going to transform it. It's going to be better than it was the day it was built, when we're done with it, which I think is going to be a testimony, not only to the staff helping us get there, but to the architect, the engineer, and everyone else that's working on the project that understands the vision and wants to see this maybe, maybe be the beginning of a renaissance on this end of town. That's what we're hoping for, okay? This is also, this exit is also the gateway to Apple Hill. It should have this kind of a project here. There's no reason, it's not an economic thing on this end of town, on east, I mean, this is Apple Hill. Some of the most expensive homes, some of the most expensive real estate is east of this site. So it's not about this being the other side of the tracks. It just has been not managed well. Let's just put it that way, and I'll leave that there. But, but in any event, so as far as the paving is concerned, we plan to do a complete overlay of the parking lot, okay, with new pavement, and restripe it, but in landscaping, irrigation, et cetera, so that, so that we'll have trees, planters, et cetera, that aesthetically add to the project. It needs to have a nice curb appeal. People like to retail in centers they enjoy going in. I can say with certainty that, that with the transition in management at Grocery Outlet, with the work that we're doing there now, with the public awareness of the fact that the center is, is being redone, between Grocery Outlet and Dollar Tree, their sales have gone up substantially just since fall of last year. So people are anticipating good things happening there, and they're going to happen. You know, with your blessing, they're going to happen. And I think being a part of it is really going to be a feather in the cap of not only the commission, but the council, the staff, et cetera, seeing this project basically recreated into a nice project on that end of town. What else? As far as the off-site improvements, things like that, that's, that's a, that particular part of the staff report, I would, I would like to have, quite honestly, taken out of this staff report, and this is the reason. When we do that project, that condition will be there. I understand that. It's just a matter of, I don't know that it really.
Which condition?
Adds to the project at this stage of the game, but knowing that that project's going to come after, over with a totally separate consideration and be conditioned accordingly, that would be my approach to it, okay? It's not a hill to die on, but I'm just sharing with you, Pierre, as far as how I see that, because that's a separate entitlement. Those improvements would be part of that project. That project would be considered in its entirety as an individual project at that time. So that's, that's the only point I'm making with respect to that. Not a matter of whether we do it or not, just a matter of, if it's not part of it right now, let's put it with, when it is, okay? So anyhow, that's, that's where I'm at on that one. Questions that I can take from you and?
So I think, thank you very much for those opening remarks. First, the first question is, are you Mr. Grotto?
I am.
Okay. We weren't sure, but we were kind of.
Check the tax roll here, the city.
And I, and I want to cite, I want to cite, I want to cite the very last sentence. I want to read the very last sentence from a letter that you prepared, it looks like June 28th, wherein you state. wherein you state, "The Carriage Retail Center in its heyday was the primary retail shopping center here in the Placerville area. Our intention is to bring its prominence back to the east end of Placerville." And, and I, I, my assessment from what has been presented, and including the landscaping aspect of this, which you're not compelled to do, to me says that you, you believe in, in this statement. And, and I think you're right. I think you and I would, would clearly agree that I don't wanna go to a place that kinda looks like that, right? I wanna go to someplace that's inviting. And the landscape element, I think you understand, is really an essential component. So, thank you very much for that. I, I think this is gonna be a fantastic addition to the upper end of Broadway there. And really, it does tie in with the Mackinac. And I think there's been a few other little developments, either on the upper end of Main, that I think they're gonna tie in. I, I really see a vibrancy, I'd like to hope for a vibrancy that can really start to build that direction. Generally, I defer to my fellow commissioners for their questions first. But since I have the microphone, the one question I have for you, I can't find my note, but I think I can remember, do you have a timeframe, any kind of a guesstimate with regards to the, the second parcel and finishing that all up? Because while we could certainly, and I would anticipate you're gonna get a favorable motion this evening for the parcel that's under review. But really, the landscaping and some other things are all, and those off-site improvements, et cetera, are all, really all tied in to the second part of this, right? And, and the merging of the parcels and all that. Can you give us any kind of an idea as, on that?
I can. First of all, with respect to the merge, we may or may not actually merge the parcels. This is new to Pierre. We may wanna just do a boundary line adjustment, okay, when we do the parcels, okay, as far as that's concerned. That does not change anything that we'll be doing on the site, as far as improvements are concerned. It's just how we're looking at it from the standpoint of, from a financing standpoint, things like that. It may be an easier way to do what we're doing. So that will be something that we'll vet out and, and, you know, in the next half hour or so, I don't know. But we plan to have the, the project landscaped by late fall this year.
Oh, wow.
Okay, and paved. So I was on the site with my paving contractor today, out there. So yeah, we're gonna have the lion's share of the project. Work's gonna be done this year. The only thing we should have remaining is the pad, and what we do with it, ultimately. So, will there be some saw cutting done because of the pad? Yes, there will, which frustrates me, but it's just the way it is. Because we wanna get the bulk of the site. We wanna build that project behind you now.
Yeah.
And have it look the way it needs to look ASAP. Because when that project looks that way, that makes my marketing for that pad that much easier. Because people say, I wanna be there, because look at the activity there. We want, we want that pad. Right now, it's tough to see it. Most people are just going, wow, what are you doing over there? You know, because it was, you know, in all honesty, a train wreck. And so we're trying to kinda put it back, take it apart, if you will, put it back together, and, and repurpose it as a nice retail center again, that's gonna bring tenants to it. And, and in my estimation, there's no reason that we would not consider similar tenants that may be on the Missouri Flat Road corridor, as far as smaller tenants, food uses, things of that nature. We want, and we are, we are dealing with other local tenants, by the way, that have significant interest in it, that we'd love to have in there.
That's great.
But, but the lifeblood of these type of retail centers, whether we like it or not, is a national tenant. Their credit for financing, the rents, et cetera. We can, we can give a, a moderate or discounted rent to a local tenant to have them there. At the end of the day, the project's got the pencil, and it's gotta work for the lenders. And that's, that's where it's at. And so our plans have that accommodated. If I could, address one other thing with respect to the murals. The murals will be essentially eight feet off the ground, the bottom of the mural. That's a twenty-four foot wall that it's going on, okay? The mural's eight feet tall, by ninety-six feet long, okay? Three thirty-two foot murals are going in. The mural is on an aluminum sheeting, that's in, a laminated aluminum, that it is printed on, painted on, however it is. It's a, it's a process that gives the mural essentially permanence, okay? And it is installed on the facade of the building, okay? There's a, we will put a frame structure on the front of Grocery Outlet. And on that frame structure, this mural will be installed on it.
That's fantastic. I have to ask, whose idea was it to put, do the murals?
It was mine.
Fantastic. Amazing. All right. I monopolize the microphone from my end enough. I'll start with Commissioner Smith. Questions of the applicant, sir? Microphone, microphone?
More specific about the landscaping helps, because I like the apple trees, the crab apple trees. It's consistent with the design of the place. The marketing of it is apple. So, do you have anything more specific you can give us on?
No, we are, we are, we have no bent toward any particular type of, of tree specifically. We want trees that are native to the area. You know, we, we use a lot of Chinese pistachio. We use a lot, a lot, a lot of black oak, and live oak, and things like that. We want trees that are gonna work well. The trees are on the front of the project right now. Those are fruitless mulberries. Survivor fruitless mulberries. It's amazing. They've ma, I mean, we went in this year, we pruned them all up, cleaned them up. It was like they, they sighed relief, okay? And they actually did quite well with, with the weather we've had. So, so they're doing okay. But from the standpoint of the landscape, we wanted, we wanna comply. We want it to be drought tolerant, if you will. But we want it also to have a, a nice look to it, you know, and, and be ornamental at the same time, and look, look, look sharp. So, yeah, we wanna, we wanna do a nice landscape job, that, that's not high maintenance, but, but by the same token, has planting in it that is representative of the community we live in. I can't put apple trees in there, because
Right.
You know?
Well, you said crab apple on your list.
Yeah, I mean, what, that's our landscape designer. These are what she's, she's putting in it, okay? And, and, and that's up for discussion, as far as that's concerned. We're, we're happy to, to go whatever direction you guys are, are interested in us going in. It's not a huge landscape plan that's there, but we're just trying to make sure that we have trees, we have plants, we have, you won't see any landscape planters at all in the site currently.
Right.
So there'll be planters, curbs, et cetera, that'll be repaved against, and that, and that type of thing. So, but yeah, we, we wanna landscape it, so that it looks good. We have landscape maintenance guys that come to the site once a week, so it'll be cared for properly. You know, the site's got some issues right now, with, with respect to customers that frequent it, and others, that, that we need to get on top of. And so, but we're working with that. And your city is working with it really well. Your Placerville PD is working with it really well. And they have been just very cooperative, Johnny on the spot. And we're, we're being as cordial as we can to patrons.
Very good. Anything else? Commissioner Lepper?
I just wanna thank you, first of all, for the clear thoughtfulness and detail that you put into the redesign and everything. I think it really flows nicely with the community. And I support everything that you've been describing with regards to really revitalizing that part of town, and bringing a sense of pride to it. So thank you for that. And just to touch, I, well, also, I was really happy to hear about the parking reconfiguration and that, because it kinda feels like a little Wild Wild West out there right now. Like, people are just flying across. So I do appreciate that you elected to put the planters in, that I think will create a little bit more harmony and flow in that parking lot. Are you amenable to changing what, assuming you saw some of the changes that staff recommended, replacing, for example, the crab apple with the London plain? Are you amenable to those ones? It sounds like you are, to what, what they're recommending might be a little bit.
Yeah, that's, that's not something that we would not give thoughtful consideration to. If it makes sense, why not?
Perfect, yeah. And then, of course, as well, the Eldorado disposal suggestions about the trash enclosures and everything seem reasonable. And then I also had a question about the maintenance of the mural, but it sounds like it's going to be really wonderful, first of all, then.
What we're trying to do with the mural is just get it out of reach.
Yeah, it's great. And I was really happy to hear that eight feet up is, makes it just, you know, you have to really want it.
Yes, we're also putting the sidewalk in front of Grocery Outlet.
Mm-hmm.
So it won't be right up against the, the pavement, the way it is right now, because there'll be cart storage out there also. There's just, there's some things that just need to be done to make, to bring this thing back into the new millennium.
Absolutely. So I just wanna say that I appreciate all of, all of the, like I said, all of the detail and clear thoughtfulness that you put into incorporating our priorities as a community, and really bringing that up. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Carter?
Thank you, Chair. I have a lot of questions, but I'll start with an easy one. The Hangtown Christmas Parade has traditionally used the parking lot of this shopping center to stage floats and to, and to facilitate that Christmas parade. Are you willing to continue that tradition? Is that something that you guys are gonna be able to accommodate, moving forward?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, excellent. Let's see here, we'll start.
I actually had to put that in the Harbor Freight lease, by the way.
Oh, beautiful, thank you. No, thank you for addressing that, because that, yeah, I wasn't concerned.
Yeah, we had to disclose all of that. And it's like, they don't like their parking lot being shut. And so we had to make sure that we notated that in their lease, and they were well aware of it, that, no, it's gonna be shut on certain days, and that's just how it's gotta be. And what I told them essentially, and they're great people, don't misunderstand, was that's your customer. You know, they're riding in there and riding into your store. So.
Excellent, thank you for addressing that. I guess my next question kinda came up from a comment that you made just now, on page four of the staff report regarding the future fast food drive-through. The project items may be modified with future, it says on the staff report that as part of future applications, a merge of APNs shall be required. So is it staff's opinion that if they do not choose to merge these APNs, does that change this application?
At the time of drafting the staff report, merge was the only option we saw. We later discussed the boundary line adjustment, and would agree that that's an option moving forward as well.
Okay. All right, let's see here. Yeah, the engineering report, as far as the right-of-way, especially to include the Broadway sidewalk project that's coming, how is that gonna be handled? Is that gonna be handled through engineering, when they readjust those lines to adapt to the, the city right-of-way that was granted to the city back in 2019? How's that gonna be handled?
The improvement plans would be reviewed and approved by the engineering department.
Goes through engineering, okay. Also had a question about the, the lighting on the back of the shopping center. In the staff report, it mentions that these are motion sensors that you're installing in the back of the shopping center. I have a concern for employee safety, especially given the history of this area and the history of the shopping center in particular. I understand with the improvements that will improve. But was there any thought giving, given to full-time lighting in the back for employee safety? Because obviously, a motion sensor light, if somebody was to, to be back there just camped out, the lights would go off. And the employees would have no indication that there was anybody out there, until they walked up on them.
That's a good question. Most new projects that we do right now, all lights are required to have motion sensors on them, for energy purposes, to meet Title Twenty-four. Because they don't want all these parking lots lit up with nobody in the parking lot. But it's a very good point. And, and believe me, we're dealing with the security issues out there now, okay? And the center's not ready to open by any means. So yeah, can we, can we put some lights out there that would be on all the time? Yeah, we, we could. You know, they're LED, they don't take a whole lot of power. But I mean, we're just trying to be compliant and, and good stewards of electricity, as we know, is on short supply. But, but the wall packs are back there, yes, by all means, for safety. So that when someone walks out a door, whatever, boom, they're on. And they'll, those wall packs will light that whole parking lot up. So, yeah, it's an important consideration of ours. We're also on that safety subject. We're looking to potentially put in some gates that would be maybe automatic gates for access to the back of the project. We are putting some fencing in, some new fencing in, that's gonna be going in. We spent about two weeks taking the rubbish off the top of that hill behind Dollar Tree. It was unbelievable how they can get that much stuff up that hill. Because it wasn't easy bringing it down the hill. But, so that, that hillside will be fenced, so that people cannot get up there, okay? And, and we're looking to potentially do the same thing with respect to the back of the site. Be able to fence it, maybe with an automatic gate, gate card, or whatever, that if employees wanna park in the back, they put their card there, opens it up. We don't wanna make it feel like we're going into a penitentiary. But in the short term, we're gonna have to have some measures that begin to change the dynamic and the paradigm up there, from what is to what will be. That will take some time, but we'll get there. And, and we'll do what we need to do, security-wise and safety-wise, until we do get there. And again, there's no shopping center that's perfectly safe, regardless of where you're at. But, but I'm hearing what you're saying, and we are all over that issue, which is why we have the light that we're putting. There's no lights behind the buildings at all right now. So, you know, it was built in a kinder, gentler time, I guess, in the early seventies, when people didn't worry that much about it. Well, now, we need safety. You know, we actually have one site in the project, about four or five suites from the Grocery Outlet. That's gonna be a patio area there. One of the, one of the suites is coming out entirely. When I say entirely, the roof's coming off of it. It's gonna have pavers. It's gonna be a little seating patio area that may have a coffee house next to it, or whatever, just so that it kinda gives a, a sense of place right there. And it'll have a wrought iron gate to the back from it, so that people park in the back, they can come through that gate into the center, you know? So, we're looking at just different things that will make ease of access better. We wanna, we want employees to be able to feel safe, and also utilize what we would consider more employee parking. Because we wanna keep the patrons out in front of the stores, and have easy access for them. But, but that'll take some time, you know, to, to get that sense of security again up there. Because there's a lot of people that just don't go there right now. But that's changing. I mean, it's changing already. Because we have a presence there, too. I mean, with our, with our people there, working and what have you, people feel better about just trucks up there and people doing stuff. So it just gives a little better vibe to it, even now.
I guess, then a quick question for staff. Is, is there a requirement for motion sensor lights, or can they have always-on lights in the back? I see that the shielding has been addressed in that memo you gave us today, but.
I believe that's up to the applicant. They can have either.
Would you be amenable to doing full-on lights, at least in the areas of employee parking, on, on the, both sides of the building that you've identified on the plan here?
I would be amenable to doing it. The concern that I have, honestly, are the people that reside above the center, and what that's gonna mean for them, having this bright light always on in the back of that building. Because there's people on, and we've met with them, up on the streets, up behind it, that have patios and decks that go out there over the hill. And it's like, do they wanna see this bright aura all the time down there, that's gonna light up the back of their hillside? So I think that there's probably a happy medium, if you will. Have it lit up until closing time, and then after nine o'clock, or whatever, then we have, you know, we have, maybe, maybe we have it on a, on a clock, and then, and then after that, it's motion, or, you know, that type of thing. I think there's a way to get there. We'll just have to think, think about it, think through it, get with my architect, and figure out what options might be available.
If I can just interject, as, as the chair, and to Pierre. To the extent that there's, it sounds like there's going to be at least some new lighting, is not a lighting plan, then, appropriate or necessary? And, and we do have requirements that we don't have, light has to be directional down, right? And there can be no, I don't, I forget what the term is, upward deflecting.
Shield.
It's, it's gotta be shielded, and it's gotta be directional. But do we need a lighting plan?
Sometimes they call it fugitive light.
Yeah, fugitive, yes. Do we need, yeah, so do we need a?
I think the lighting plan is part of your package. I, I don't recall specifically what it is.
I mean, the measurement, the, you know, the lumen, the lumen dispersment?
There is a lighting plan with, with a schedule, and you have all, you have all the luminaires that are proposed on the building. They'll have to meet city code, they have to be shielded. So you will not see any lighting shooting up into the sky.
Okay. Which, which should alleviate some of the concern about the neighbors up above in the back.
And it's not that the light is gonna really get onto their property. Most of that hillside behind us is ours.
Right.
It's just a matter of, as a good neighbor, do we wanna have a bright light shining onto the neighbor behind us? That's the concern.
Oh, sure. We, we understand. And I appreciate your comment, that will strike a balance, and we'll, and we'll work it out. I think you understand Commissioner Carter's concern about employee safety. I think you understand Commissioner Carter's concern about employee safety, and I'm sure you're concerned about employee safety as well. And the city is equally so, and, and consumer, customer safety, so, continue sir, sorry.
Thank you, no problem. I appreciate that discussion. Next question is regarding the signage. So you're asking us to approve signage greater than that allowed under the provisions of City Code currently. Can you give us a little bit more information and justification for why we would exceed our sign provisions for, for your project?
Well, the 40-foot sign is already a sign that's there, existing today.
I believe this is in regards to the actual building signage, I think is what, was what we're being asked to exceed the guidelines on, correct?
It's the entire package.
Oh, the entire package, okay, so including the pole signs and the, okay, so, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what, what we look at from, from the standpoint of the buildings themselves is, they set back off the road pretty significantly. And so we look at signage from the standpoint of what does it look like as you're driving by? And so that distance, we utilize a calculus to make sure it can actually be seen. Most of the smaller signs that are on the buildings, you'd have a difficult time reading them from the road. I would not recommend it, because you're going to probably try to focus on it too long and who knows where you'll end up at that point. But like the majors, Harbor Freight, Dollar Tree, Grocery Outlet, those are three critical signs that need to be seen from the road. And so when, where they may be a five-foot tall letter, when you take it back 120 feet from the roadway, that's what, that's what a five-foot tall letter looks like, it's about an inch. You know what I mean, in, prospectively, is, is what I'm talking about. So they're not as dominant as they look on the face of the building when you're up against the building, nowhere near when you're further away. And so that's, that's the key, and we try to basically scale the letters based upon the tenant size and what their typical sign program is. Again, like for Harbor Freight, they have a sign program that they need to have met, because that's their, like I say, their identity, their logo, and what they require within their lease. So, you know, we do our best to, to rein them into, to a certain extent, but we also know that the benefit they bring to the center, the benefit that they bring to the community, the benefit they bring to the tax base is huge. You know, some of the, we, we've done some studies, just as a, just as, for information purposes. I actually shared them with Cleve and, and with Pierre on retail that's here now. You know, your tractor supply is number one in the chain, if you didn't know that. Okay, that's the kind of sales that store does. The Office Max up here, number three in the chain. These, they're, they're, the retail, national retailers that are up here do phenomenally well, because number one, they're here, there is a significant demand, there's almost 200,000 people in the county. So if we look at it just on a, on a micro level at, at the city, yeah, there's 12,000, 10,000, whatever it is here. But people come in from quite a ways to shop here, that shop local and really don't want to necessarily go further down the hill, especially at $5 gas. So it's, it's, you know, an item that you're going to buy down in Rancho Cordova is $10 more, because you made the trip. And, and so what we're trying to do is bring those tenant uses here, so that they not only provide the opportunity for the, for the customer, but they provide the tax base for our community and not for Sacramento.
Does staff have any more, anything to add to justify us giving them a variance on that to add signage?
Yeah, the variance and the conditional use permit are only pertaining to the new 18-foot sign on the east side, so.
Got you.
It's certainly at the discretion of the Planning Commission, whether the find, you feel the findings can be met.
So that sign alone is what's, is what's causing the, the variance?
Yes.
Okay.
The signage for the center is under the master sign plan.
Excellent, okay.
The code is very particular to any signs that are over 10 feet.
And their total lineal footage is below what they would be allowed, if I remember correctly. The total on-building signage is like 1,500 square feet or something, and they're allowed like 2,000. So they're well within, did I get that right?
I think in our zoning ordinance, wall signs are limited to 200 square feet.
But, but it's aggregate, right? We're taking the, it's the aggregate of everything, right? So they're, and there's no one entity that was beyond what they were allowed, right? So we're all good there too.
I do believe that's true.
Yeah.
I have to double check, but yes, I believe that's true.
I also had one question about, you just mentioned this outdoor dining patio area, referencing the maps that we have. It's not, it's not on any of those maps. I see it's on the, the parking map and a couple of them, but if we look at these, at, at the rendering of the shopping center, it doesn't show anything about this patio. And I had a question regarding the airport overlay, I see it's addressed here about the noise level, that outdoor dining is incompatible with anything within the airport overlay, but that, can you clarify that on, on the decibel level of the center being within the outdoor dining?
While Kristen is looking up the decibel levels in the airport overlay, it is staff's understanding that the, that the covered patio area where they were going to remove a suite was removed from the project.
Okay.
So this is new to staff, now are we changing back? It's our understanding that there was not going to be, originally, early on in the project, they were going to create a little outdoor area, it's my understanding that's been removed.
Well.
No.
Yeah, because you addressed it in your opening comments, yeah.
Pierre is absolutely right. We were going to do a much larger one, okay, with the patio area. But our concern was, if we do it much larger, does it become actually a, an attractive nuisance? And, and that's really why we felt, you know what, no, let's, it's basically about 900 square feet, it's not real big. About 15 by 60, deep somewhere around there, 17 by 55, whatever. But we just felt to, to be able to attract a nice coffee use or something like that, that would like to have a little patio, that patio would be something that's not there at all currently at that center. And, yeah, this is new Pierre, I apologize for that. But again, it's not changing square footage of the center. It's, it's taking basically 900 square feet out of it as far as lease space is concerned. But we just felt from an amenity standpoint, people like to be outside sometimes, they like that different environment. And it'll have a pergola type of thing over the top of it. It's not that it's wide open, but it'll be more of a patio garden, patio, that type of thing, that we just felt might, might be something that would be more attractive.
If I may, from the drawings, this is the item or the area that's just east of the Harbor Freight, correct?
If you look at the, if you look at the lineup that is to the left of Grocery Outlet, the gray buildings there, okay? Yes. It's like where that first brown one is to the left of that, just to the left of those four units.
Okay, I thought it was that.
It's not, no, it's not, it's not, it's not to the left of Harbor Freight.
Okay.
Between Harbor Freight and, and Dollar Tree, that's about a 3,000 foot suite, that's there currently. Harbor Freight takes about 17,000, so they take a 12,000, a 2,000, and a 3,000. That makes up their, their particular retail. Again, what we're trying to do is just have some amenities there that people look for and, and enjoy when the weather cooperates. And a nice shaded patio is kind of a nice amenity.
And I, I totally understand, I, I don't, I appreciate what you're doing, I love the look of this shopping center, but part of our job is to make sure that all these things, you know, fit the rules and the code. Was staff able to figure out the decibel level?
Yes, and I can, I can see based on the description how it could be a little confusing. So the Airport Land Use Commission has zones, certain distances outside and where the path of travel is. So that sentence additionally for this land use, outdoor dining and or gathering places are incompatible with the CNEL of 65 decibels. I'm not insinuating through the analysis that it's incompatible for the site, just that this land use designation, you can't have outdoor dining. So this is outside of the lowest noise zone concern for the Airport Land Use Commission, and so we are not anticipating any impacts.
Okay, so the decibel level should not be an issue, okay.
Yeah, Chair, if I could just, just maybe add a little to this discussion regarding aircraft. If you look at the topography, you're not going to have planes coming anywhere near the site. It's going to cause an impact on noise or a hazard or otherwise.
Excellent, and then I guess I'll finish up by saying that I appreciate your comment about the, that second parcel being a totally separate project, and I guess I, I'm still hanging on to my issue with the parking, that you're counting parking spaces in this second parcel as part of your requirement for the project that we're looking at today. I think that your suggestion of keeping this a completely separate project should be the way we do this, and that any parking requirement for this center in particular should be handled on this parcel and not include this parcel that we should not even be talking about tonight, because it's not part of this, this decision, so can you? Oh, okay, yeah, so maybe I'll let Commissioner Keeney comment real quick and then you can go from there possibly.
Okay. Right, the, the parking, I also was very concerned about that, the, the numbers and the fact that some of the stalls need to be on that adjoining parcel. I spoke with staff and now I, I would like to know what the official term is. It's not recording an easement, but what, what would be needed to be recorded for those?
It would be a reciprocal parking agreement and covenant.
Reciprocal parking agreement, thank you.
Yeah, so if I may, I want to just add a little clarification, just based on what Commissioner Carter just said, if I may. This isn't a distinct, separate project, that other parcel. So what, we will treat it as an amendment to this site plan review, because the entire center is under a site plan review. So in other words, whatever's going to happen to those buildings, we want it to be compatible with the existing center as one unit. Most large commercial centers are comprised of several parcels, so that's not an issue here. So you have to understand that the signage is on this other parcel. So as Mr. Grado mentioned earlier, the reason why staff was looking at a merger is because the property line currently goes through the existing east building, and that's not permitted any longer. And the property line would go through the, the pad that's proposed for the restaurant. And so we would require a merger. However, we could entertain a boundary line adjustment, such as the boundary line goes between the buildings and doesn't cause, cause an issue there. But we do want to have a park, parking, a reciprocal parking agreement and covenant, such that people can park wherever they want within the parking lot, because it serves the entire center. I hope that clarifies things for you.
It does, thank you. And can you possibly address my concerns regarding this future fast food restaurant? Where would you add the parking that would be required, since you've already taken up all this to address the 351 spots that are required? Where would you put that additional parking when that building was approved, if, if it was?
The, the 351 spaces that are required are actually required for the center at build-out, okay? Not as the center exists today. Those stalls are there so that they anticipate this other building going in, and we've hit the parking ratio that we need to hit. I think right now at three, we have what, six, what's the square footage of the center right now? 60,000?
Estimated was like 69,800 and some change.
Okay. We look at, and, and again, I'm not sure, the parking ratio, maybe, maybe I'm not clear on that. We look at basically a 4.5 per thousand, per parking ratio, per thousand square feet. And at 4.5, we easily meet that threshold. That's, that's, that's not untypical for, for parking ratios, especially if I might add, when you look at a type of a store like a Harbor Freight. A Harbor Freight at 17,000 feet, if you figure four and a half stalls per thousand, okay? You're looking at 68, about 75 stalls would be allocated to Harbor Freight. That would be an incredible day if they can keep 75 cars at Harbor Freight all day long. It just doesn't happen, okay? Now, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, because their typical sale may be $200 every time somebody walks in and buys a drill or a drill press or compressor, whatever they're selling. But the point I'm making is we look at the different types of uses that are in there, because Harbor Freight is almost like a warehouse retail, if you will, as opposed to the grocery store. The grocery store, yeah, they're going to do four and a half stalls per thousand, that's about par for them. You know, and, and again, depending on time of day and things of that nature. Most of fast food, 70% of fast food goes through the drive-through lane. So parking requirements for drive-through, they're not real significant. As an example, we have 10 stalls for the Dutch Bros that we just finished on Missouri Flat. Rarely do those 10 stalls get used, only when the employees are there. Okay, if they have eight or nine, 10 employees there, they're used, otherwise everybody's going through the drive-through. So that's kind of the, the formula that we use. So when we look at the parking, we know there's going to be a cross-parking agreement, because there's going to be two parcels there. There's reciprocal parking, reciprocal access through the parcels, there's two driveways, one comes through one parcel, the other comes through the other one. So those easements, those, those agreements need to be in place. But we look at that as far as the whole global site, what is that parking going to be required? And that's how we basically park this. So right now, in our mind, it's overparked with, without the, the other restaurant pad being used, okay, currently. But we know when we put the restaurant pad in, okay, it may take 15 stalls, let's say, because everything's going to be going, primarily go through the drive-through. They don't build the dining areas, especially since COVID, as big as they used to, because people are not dining in as much, they're picking it up or they're having it delivered. And that's really, as you, as you brought up, the, the electric vehicle, which I think was a, was a good point. I got to think about that, because again, we're doing it on our other project. Can we do it here? Yeah, potentially we can, I just have to see if we have the actual power to do it. You know, like I say, it's different when you're starting with PG&E ground zero than it is PG&E existing, because there's only so much that's there and then you just have to start changing out transformers, and it just gets really, can get really complex and very expensive. But, but that's how we look at the whole, like I say, globally in the center of the parking.
I, I understand that, but the city does have specific requirements in City Code for the actual number of parking stalls required based on square footage and based on number of tables, for instance, at a restaurant. We just dealt with this with our, another restaurant recently, having, you know, to, to jump that hurdle, which you'd obviously would be required to do like everybody else. So just to clarify, these 351 spots are including what is expected to go into this fast food restaurant? And what is the parking requirements for fast food restaurants? And I think it's probably different than what it would be for retail, correct?
I think we're looking at 19 parking spaces for the fast food restaurant, that's what's going in. The 351 parking spaces are at a ratio of one, one space per 200 square foot.
Exactly.
Looked at the entire center. So when this new project comes in, we're going to recalculate the parking requirements, because it also, we're going to look at queuing for the drive-through if it, if they're proposing a drive-through, because that may or may not take up additional parking spaces that are shown on the site plan. So that's a, that will be an analysis that will take place in the future at that time. But for right now, the parking is sufficient for the existing center.
All right, well, thank you for allowing me to, yeah, grill you a little bit there, but I guess that concludes my questioning for this.
Appreciate your details, Commissioner Carter. Commissioner Keeney?
Thank you. And Mr. Grado, I want to thank you for your patience for hearing us out and answering thoroughly all of our questions. I would just want to join in with what's been said before, this is a terrific project, one that the community has wanted for some time, and I really appreciate your efforts and your investment to improve the east side of Flatserville. Most of my questions, right now, I have several, regard the signage. And one thing that kind of threw me in the July 6 memo that you gave us about your sign criteria. Number three, you mentioned that major tenants such as Harbor Freight may utilize a can sign under their individual lettered sign. What, what does that look like, a can sign?
A lot of times, I'm sorry, a lot of times what tenants do is they'll use like a translucent box that would be the width of their sign and their letters are on the face of that. So that it kind of, it kind of highlights their letters as they, as they affix to that translucent box. So that's what I mean when I say like a can sign. What we don't, what we won't have, what, why we accept that and not other can signs is because there's still individual letters on it. What we don't want is we don't want can signs, and some are there now and they'll be changed, that basically are a box that affixed to the wall and it's got a, one panel in it, plastic panel in it, and that's your sign.
Okay.
I hate that.
Okay, so this, this has a different look, but it would have.
It's not an inexpensive look, it's, it's an expensive sign to put up. But it has, it has almost like a, like I say, a translucent panel behind the letters, and the letters are lit and that panel is lit, so it just highlights the letters.
Just the letters?
Yes.
Okay.
All the signs ultimately will have individual letters on the building, so that they're mounted individually on. Now, some of them have logos, I mean, national tenants, they may have a logo, they may have a swoosh or whatever they have on it. But it'll be part of that same sign, but they will not. of that same sign, but they will not be, like I say, a can that has a couple of LED lights in it. No.
Okay, thank you. I used Google, and I couldn't find anything, so it pays to talk to the experts. So my next question is regarding the pole signs themselves. I really like the design, and it's so much different from what you think of as a pole sign. But I am concerned about the size, especially of the one on the west. Now, I realize that, you know, you're entitled, you could keep the pole sign that's there. I think it would detract from the aesthetics of the shopping center. But what you're proposing, as I understand it, is going to be about the width of the existing signs and the same height. Would you consider minimizing that, maybe bringing it down? You know, I don't even know what to suggest, because it's, you're entitled to just redo that. And it's not to say I don't like the design itself. What I'm concerned about is that's going to be kind of like a wall separated from the rest of the parking lot. So, and I appreciate what you said earlier on about your tenants' need to have that signage to draw people in. So what do you, what can we do about that? Or what would you be willing to do about that?
What I would, what I would potentially be willing to do and what I can do are two different things. Is, the leases that these tenants have, have their sign panels on a 40-foot tall sign. They look at that, and they covet that, because they know that that's their primary sign for the center. That goes for Dollar Tree, that goes for Grocery Outlet as existing tenants, and it's in their leases, and that's in a lease for Harbor Freight, because we didn't go beyond that height. We stayed at that height after discussion.
Right. It's limited too, but they, they depend on that 40-foot.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they wish that most of those trees between that sign and the freeway weren't there. I mean, I'm just being, I'm not being facetious. I am to a certain extent. But I mean, that's their, they want recognition as much as they can from people going by it on Highway 50. And, and it's a big deal, you know? As an example, we have on our project, just west of, or south of Missouri Flat, however you want to look at it, behind the Target Center, we have a 50-foot pylon sign there that'll be on a hill. So it'll be 60-foot or 65 when it's all said and done, in height. But a lot of it is when people drive by, you don't have a whole lot of time to look at these things. And so size does matter when it comes to what you see on a freeway-oriented sign. And that's really the big part of it. And so, not only that, though, there's only two tenants represented on that sign today, Grocery Outlet and Dollar Tree. We want to provide signage for all of our tenants on that sign, at least a panel on it. And I think you'll see that in the sign. And what we've tried to do with the sign is bring in the same elements we have in the shopping center, which is a nice formidable stone base, so it gives it a grounding, and then the sign essentially up on top of it. So the sign, yes, it's getting, it's getting larger to the extent that we're going to have more panel on it, just by volume, if you will. Size-wise, it's still 20 feet by 40 feet.
Right.
It's really not changing that way. You know, the bottom, the bottom brick is probably, or rock is probably eight feet tall, you know, somewhere around there, six to eight feet tall. Again, keeping it out of the reach of people, you know, although they could scale it probably. But in any event, we want it to look right, and, you know, a foundation of eight feet for another 32 feet above it is probably about right. That will look good. I think when you see the sign, especially the way we put the logo on it, we put the Apple Farm place down the side of it, it's going to be a beautiful sign. It's going to be the nicest sign in Flasterville. I mean, bottom line, along that type of retail. Now, I have to say, the other individual signs that are downtown, I'm not looking at those historic district, things of that nature. But we're trying to bring the element in of Apple Hill, of the region, without utilizing the name. We don't want to get into copyright issues. But, but that's kind of how we looked at it, and tried to, to construct it and redo it. And I will say this, this is not an inexpensive endeavor. Okay, those two signs are $150,000. Okay, they're a lot of money. Do we have to do them? We don't necessarily have to do them. We could potentially put Harbor Freight under the Dollar Tree sign and just run with it. I wouldn't be satisfied with that, though. It's going to look weird. You know what I mean? It looks like you dressed up the center and then fumbled a football on the one-yard line, which is the signage. You know, it needs to represent what's behind it. And that's what we've tried to do with it, is bring in the same elements that we have on the buildings with the sign. So I'm trapped with respect to size.
Well, let's talk about the other sign at the other end that you're proposing, and this is actually the subject of the variance. When I look at our sign ordinance, one thing that struck me was that the plan commission is to consider limiting the height and area to the minimum level necessary. So that sign over there, being 18 feet tall, now it's regarded, considered, it has the look almost of a monument sign, however, because of the height, 18 feet, we define it as a pole sign. What about that sign? Is there a way that we could minimize that? Maybe not down to monument-sized sign, but given the direction that I see in the city ordinance, what about constraining the sign over on the east side?
What we run into is there's a nexus here and a competition between landscape and signage. If we had no landscape over there, and just like a cobble or a bark or whatever, we'd probably put a 10-foot sign there and be fine. When you start putting landscape entries and things like that, you've got to get some elevation to the sign, or in five years, it won't be seen at all. And that's what we're up against, is we need to get something that's going to be seen from somewhat of a distance also. You know, when you have, let's say you had a sign that's 10 feet, this ceiling's 10 feet. When you're 300, 400 feet away driving a car, you won't see that sign, okay, until you're right on top of it. And so you need some elevation to it. And this is, like I say, this is very much our, well, as an example, and again, I don't want to keep, continue to compare Missouri Flat, but just to give, this is all part of the county. We're part of the county too here. I know that we want to comply and try to make it, get as much uniformity as we can in the community. But as an example, we had a 37-foot, Pierre might even remember this, the monument sign that was on Missouri Flat Road for our crossing shopping center was 37 feet tall, with a 50-foot sign at the freeway, actually 34, with a 50-foot sign at the freeway. I dropped it down to 18 feet, because I felt it was adequate. I didn't want the sign dominating the center. We have much less frontage than you have. We only have 500 feet of frontage on our project there. And we dropped that down to 18 feet. Like I say, with the amount of frontage we have, and the amount of distance, and people coming down Newtown to Broadway, et cetera, they got to be able to see it, to get in. If they don't see it, and everybody tries to get in the driveway, that's across from Les Schwab will have a real problem, just because it can't handle the traffic. So, yeah, the height is, it seems like a lot, prospectively, when you compare it to the center itself, and look at the size of the center, the size of the parking, the size of the buildings, the gables that are beyond it, that are, I don't know, what are they, Brian, 30 feet tall, I think? The gable on Harbor Freight, it's not a real tall sign, prospectively. But yet, it can be seen as you're driving by it. So, yeah, the height of it is critical, again, for tenants and what they, what they look for. I can say this, with all, with 100% transparency and honesty, Harbor Freight wanted two 40-foot signs, one on each end of the site. I said that system won't happen. So this was my compromise.
Over on the east side, where the second, actually where the variance is going to apply, there's also going to be a masonry block shielded trash enclosure. And I'm trying to, I don't think we were provided a single sheet that showed all of those elements. And I'm a little concerned about kind of crowding, and how that's actually going to work. Staff, is there, was there a plan that shows the location of everything?
Yes, it's attachment six in your staff report.
I'm sorry, which one?
Six.
Eight-six.
And it provides the locations and elevations.
Attachment six, okay.
Eight-six.
Okay, so I see the trash enclosure, and then where is the second monument sign?
I don't believe the monument sign is shown on that site plan. I apologize. For the trash enclosures.
The monument sign is near the entry, the drive entry on that end of the site. The trash enclosure is further into the site.
Further in, and so the sign is, would be to the east of the...
Trash enclosure.
Okay.
And the trash enclosure is more internal to the site, okay? And that trash enclosure that you would see there would be associated with the future building. The new trash enclosures that are going in, as like the Dollar Tree, the, what I'll call the east end of the Dollar Tree, directly across from the east end of the Dollar Tree is where the trash enclosure is going to be for the Dollar Tree.
Right. So the one that, the trash enclosure that is closest to Broadway, that would not be built at this time?
No.
Okay, well, that, okay. That gives you a lot more room over there. There'll be some landscaping and no trash enclosure. No, so when you get to the point where you're, if you're going to do your future development, we'll have a new site plan review, that will
Correct.
All those locations, and that will all be considered at the time that you submit an application, if that even occurs.
Correct.
At some point.
Yeah, we'll look at those.
And of course, you'll have to, you won't be moving this, this new pole sign, right?
No.
It's going to go where it's going to go, right?
It goes in once, that's correct.
You'll work around that.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right, well, that...
Yeah, what we've done with the trash enclosures, Commissioner, is trash enclosures that would be visible from Broadway.
Mm-hmm. Those are, right.
Yes.
Yeah, next to Dollar Tree, and most of the, well, there is another one that might be visible. So I appreciate, yeah, the shielding of those, but the other ones seem to be at the rear of the property.
That's right. That's right. We want, we don't want to have, right now, we've had situations that I can go just a little bit in with respect to site access, et cetera, because we're widening out the drive aisle behind the building, so that actually you could circulate delivery trucks behind the building, garbage trucks behind the building, because everything serves that project now from the front. Groceries come in, 65-foot trailers are backing in from Broadway. It's just so inconsistent with what the norm is today. And also, the fire department, they want access around the back of the project. They've never had it. Well, they'll have it now, because we'll be able to give them that access, paved access, et cetera. So it's, like I say, it provides the amenities that you need for what I'll call a fully functioning center, and not having the conflict with semis backing into a retail center with cars, because, you know, we plan for the center to be successful and to have a lot of community activity there. And so we want to try to separate as many semis as we can from automobiles and what's going on there during the day. Because right now, they are literally waiting for each other to back up, and it's, it's kind of crazy. If you ever get an opportunity to swing by about 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning, it's quite the dance to watch with the semis getting in there and backing, or pulling into Les Schwab and backing in, and it all goes on. So, but like I say, we're going to keep all the trash enclosures, staging areas, cardboard, you know, the, between Grocery Outlet and Dollar Tree, they generate cardboard like there's no tomorrow, even though they have balers. But we want to have fencing, so that that cardboard is behind fences with slats in it. We don't want to look at your cardboard, you know? And so we're working with the tenants to let them know that, listen, we're putting in new guidelines that you're going to have to abide by, so that the center looks good all the time. I don't want it looking littered, because there's cardboard all over it. So...
I appreciate that. I think that that's fantastic to hear, that you've got your own local set of guidelines for the tenants. I just want to have you comment or speak to what the engineer's report, I mentioned this to staff earlier. A couple of things there is improving pedestrian access, and the other is, this, it's on one of the site plans, the abandoned driveway. So could you just clarify, at what point do you plan to abandon that driveway? Is that part of this first phase? And then also, what about the engineer's comments about pedestrian access?
I'll let Bobby, is Bobby still here? Oh, yeah, Bobby's here. I wasn't sure. I hadn't looked back there at all. I'll let Bobby address that. As far as timing on that, I mean, from my comment, I would anticipate that abandonment's going to happen first phase.
First phase, okay.
As far as that drive entry is concerned.
All right, and so the...
We want landscape along that area, too.
Yeah, that triggered something for, as far as the engineers of...
Yeah, and she can address the access and things like that.
Hi.
Good evening. Bobby LeBeck with LeBeck Engineering. I can answer any technical questions that you have about the site, and then I have some comments about the conditions of approval.
Okay, yeah, the, my question was, the engineer's report review about the abandoned driveway. So I wasn't clear, I know that, you know, we've got these two parcels, and that abandoned driveway is on, is it on parcel 030, or is it on parcel 028?
It looks like it spans the property line that's there now.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone?
It looks like it, the existing driveway goes across the property line where it is now. The new one will be over further. But the existing encroachment, which is where the fast food is, that's going to be removed, is, looks like right where the property line is, that we're going to be changing when we do the lot line adjustment.
So I guess the...
Put the site plan up on the screen.
Charlie, she'll be, I finally got my hands on the engineer's report, number six, the proposed abandoned driveway. She doesn't say, curbs shall be constructed to ensure that no access is permitted. I suppose, given that that's the engineer's comment, as you abandon the driveway, you're just going to build up the curb as required by city standards?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's the important thing. So thank you, and I apologize. I've gotten very disorganized flipping through all the different pages on the application. And as far as improving pedestrian access, what are the plans to address that comment from the engineer?
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now. The, it's definitely not ADA along the building frontages. Some of the cross slopes coming right out of the doors go up as high as 10%. So what it's probably going to be is like a landing, slope-down landing, slope-down to the doors. We're trying to look at that. Grocery Outlet comes in from the side, and so we'll probably have to do a trench drain there to get that whole handicapped area to work. He's going to do an AC overlay, so I'm trying to calculate the grades out for that, where, you know, we don't have to, we can make those ADA parking stalls that are out in front of the grocery outlet area. With regard to the path out to the street in the engineer memo comment number three, we have it coming out there to be for a future access to a possible future curb veteran sidewalk that may be there someday. The retaining wall that she refers to is only one foot high. So, you know, it could, it could be ramped up or what have you. I did see staff's comments in the staff report about possibly connecting, I'm not sure what direction that is. So the, I guess it would be the northeasterly corner of the, of the project, because there's a bus turnout there and an existing sidewalk. So we would have to look at that to see if we could somehow make a route from there over to the buildings. From the easterly side of the grocery outlet center over there, the grade just really kind of drops off over there. So, so I'll have to take a look at that. Right now, we had the ADA path coming in the, on the other side of the grocery outlet, out to those stalls. And then it, and then it's like a curb and a sidewalk because of the drop-off over there. So I did see staff's comments about trying to access from that existing sidewalk, and I intend to take a look at that.
I appreciate that. And it's not really, you know, in our purview of all the engineering, but it gives me confidence that you have seen the comments, you're addressing them. And of course, there's always going to be site con... And of course, there's always going to be site constraints. You're, you don't have a blank slate answered. But I think what's important for us to hear is that you're aware of these problems, these issues, and you're working with staff to address them and bring things up to current standards. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, it's going to be very difficult to put a sidewalk in there unless some of that can be out in the right-of-way next to the, there's a certain portion in the middle of the site where there's the bike path or the bike lane that's there has like maybe two feet before the retaining wall comes. And so, it's definitely would be a complicated situation. Leonard mission, maybe we could run them through the site or something like that, because we can't lose a whole row of parking stalls. So, we'll be looking at that when the future fast food, you know, comes into play.
Okay. Chair Fran, I think I'm done.
Fantastic, Commissioner. I don't have any questions for you, but Mr. Grado, I had just one or two comments. And thank you for your, for assisting us.
I do want to mention.
Yes, go ahead.
My comments on the staff report, if I may. Well, we already discussed going to a lot line adjustment, so that comment's already been made. With regard to the conditions of approval, I just wanted to clarify our request regarding those. So, on condition number five, we're requesting the removal of the requirement of shade calculations. Since the parking lot's existing and what he's doing is over and above, we're requesting that condition number 14 be removed until such time as an actual application comes in that meets that. Condition number 15, we were supplied the boundary and the topo from another engineer, so we didn't know it didn't contain the city right-of-way acquisition. We had our survey working fast and furiously on that as soon as we received the comments that, from the city, that that was not included. What it is, is three little sections are the acquisition, where it's following where the existing asphalt is. It, it looks like it doesn't make any impact on our design, with the exception of possibly the, a little bit of the drive-through for the future fast food would have to be scooted over a little bit in that area. But otherwise, there, the existing site had some parking stripes that looks like they previously had maybe gone out a little bit into the right-of-way with the original layout that's existing. But with our proposed landscaping planters along the frontage there, there would be no parking in any of that. So, the, so we will be updating our site plan per condition number 15 to include that right-of-way acquisition. And there may be some landscaping currently out in the right-of-way, because that says parking and landscaping out of the right-of-way. So, we'll have to see what that entails to remove if there's any dirt or anything like that existing in the county's right-of-way.
So, and I'm going to, unfortunately, I'm going to have to ask you to go back to the other two, but let's stay on 15 for a moment, only because when we have to make a motion, the motion will have to include any amendments or changes we make or deletions to these conditions.
Right, that's why I'm.
I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to 15. And you provided a lot of information there that, at least to my ears, was somewhat technical. And so, and this is kind of to staff. What they're saying is that for a variety, Kristin, were you raising your hand to make? Oh, okay, that's good. So, what you, if I understood what you were saying with regards to condition 15, because A, you receive plans from some other engineer from the past, and you don't know what you're going to get into until you really get in there, is right in my, and just bear with me as I very apply my simpleton language to what you provided us. But at the end of the day, what you're saying is, Pierre, they're going to provide you something that's satisfactory to staff and the engineering department. Is that what I'm kind of hearing will be the ultimate outcome of 15?
Yes, 15 is that we would like to have when we actually have the site plans that are approved, we want it to show the right-of-way, the accurate property lines and where the right-of-way is.
Okay. And so, that won't be a problem, right, for you to show?
Right, we are agreeing with condition 15.
We are agreeing with it.
There was just mention of it several times in the staff report, so I wanted to clarify.
Oh, okay, all right. So, can I go back? Would you please go back to the other two? Because I was fumbling for the conditions of approval while you were running through them. And in case there's a motion.
So, just condition number five, I believe. We are just requesting that we not have to do shade calculations, because, and I'm not a landscape designer, but I think that it was mentioned before that we couldn't comply.
Yeah, that's, okay, so.
So, I would not comply with that.
All right. So, we'll have to have that discussion when we bring this item back to us and staff can provide some direction with regards to that. But I did catch Mr. Grado's comment that just because of the configuration, more than likely will not be able to meet the city's requirements for shade calculation at noon on June 21st of the year, if I understood correctly. And then what was the second one?
Condition number 14 discusses entering into a subdivision, a street frontage improvement agreement or construction of curb gutter and sidewalk. And it says, "In the event that there is any off-street parking or build that increases the density of the use of the property, et cetera." And because we're not proposing anything at this time, we're just requesting that that condition be removed and be brought forth with the next application when it would apply.
Okay, all right. And so, that'll, we'll have discussion on that when we bring it back for discussion and staff can provide us some additional clarification on that. Okay.
And then continuing on, if I may, condition number 18, we just, I think it reads as though it's a standard condition. We just want to make it clear that the buildings are existing, the center and the parking lot's existing. No new fire hydrants or building sprinklers are proposed. So, we don't want to leave an open, open-ended where we're cutting up, because we already have to cut up the parking lot to put irrigation to all these planters. And so, there's a lot of expense already being, and so I just wanted to make that clear that we're not being required to do any new fire hydrants or building sprinklers. Okay? And then just a comment on condition number 20. I will do my best with regard to that one. This is a really old site. There are no record drawings that I've been able to locate. We were provided with record drawings for Broadway when they did the bike lane out there, and we've put all of that data on there. Some of the stuff on there doesn't seem to actually be exactly right. We have a survey which has surface utilities, and we're able to see where those are, and those are all on the site plan. But where services are underground, where there's no above-ground stuff, you know, we just don't have any idea. I've sent an email to Kristin just requesting, because I did see also the engineer memo comments about Hangtown Creek and things like that. And I was thinking about it, and even though they said there was nothing on site, when they piped Hangtown Creek under the buildings here, you'd think there was probably some plans for that. And so, maybe they might have some other data on there that might be helpful. And then she, so she's having her other departments just look again and see if there's just anything that we can find to help with that. But so just, I wanted to put that comment on record about that I'm going to do the best I can with where existing utilities are located under the pavement. With that, any other questions?
Oh, good, that's, I'm glad you're done. Okay, that's almost good cop, bad cop. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Then, Mr. Grado, I, I had just a couple very quick comments. You indicated you are at least willing to consider electric charging stations subject to infrastructure, not the least of which is PG&E, et cetera, right? So, okay. And then, the last thing deals with the lighting of the signs, hall signs and on-building signs. And I don't know if this is in the lease or what, you know. Are these dusk-to-dawn lighting? Or do they go off like maybe at 10:00 or 11:00 PM? Or are they, you know, open all night, 24/7 lighting? Any idea?
You know, typically, they don't necessarily stay on all night, the signs. They're definitely, typically on probably until maybe 11 o'clock at night, even when the store may be closed at 9:00, just so that it's still there. A lot of the lighting, signs, yeah, signs can go off, I think, earlier than maybe the parking lot lights would go off, because they're not necessarily a security concern with respect to lighting perimeter of the buildings or lighting the parking lot, things like that.
Whose authority or purview is it? Who would have authority to make that determination as to when they go off?
It would be me, as the deckler into the center.
Okay.
You know, with respect to CC&Rs and what have you, that we.
So, would you be amenable to a condition that would require them to go off no later than midnight?
Yeah, that, I don't think that's a problem at all.
Okay, all right.
Again, it might be something that, that you may revisit at some time.
Yeah.
And I only say that because, and I don't, I couldn't even tell you what lights stay on at that.
Right.
I'm not around at that time of night.
Right.
I couldn't tell you any retail center to even use as an example, quite honestly. But yeah, no, that, I don't see that to be, to be a big problem at all.
And I think some, we have some facilities where the parking light, lighting actually reduces. They turn off like a percentage of their lights after a certain, for some reason.
Those are all the new, those are all the new light standards that are going in today.
Yeah. And I think for a variety of reasons, you know, environmental and neighbor and like, you know, conserve electricity, all for a whole variety of reasons, it kind of makes sense. Making sure that we aren't creating an unsafe environment at the same time, so.
Exactly.
Okay. Those were all the comments that I have, and those are all the questions from commissioners. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this project? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. Before we get into our deliberations, I'll ask my fellow commissioners if you want a brief respite or if you want to plow through this and try to get to cover all of the items, because there's quite a, there's a big pile of stuff. What's the, I'm happy to continue on.
I'm down to keep going.
Okay, I have a keep going, I have a keep going, keep going. Okay, I think we're going to keep going. The first comment I want to say is, I am as excited about this. I have the same feeling, the positive energy, as when Home Depot made their proposal and went in and what they did there, and what I think the Mackinaw is proposing. These, those three projects, these three projects, to me, are just really exciting. They represent just bellwether events for the areas where they're going. So, I'm, I'm very excited. Having said that, I think there's a couple of things that perhaps some of the commissioners have, would like to see considered. I would like to start, though, if I may, just to provide some focus and turn this to staff. We just heard the comments from their engineering representative, and she referenced several items in the conditions of approval. And I, I don't have a sense, and I don't know if my fellow commissioners do either, but I don't have a sense as to what we need to do with these. I think I, we need some staff input on these, so if that's okay, I'd like to start there.
Sure. I think staff is amenable to all of the changes that were recommended. We're fine with number five, having the shade calculation requirement removed. We're also okay with removing condition of approval 14.
So, again, to help me out with language for a motion, with 14, you're amenable to just removing that condition entirely?
Correct.
Okay, so this one just comes out.
I have a question about that, because I thought that the actual landscape plan was triggered by development on this second parcel. So, now I'm confused that the applicant is volunteering to go ahead and put in landscape. But when they, if and when they go to develop the other parcel, will that be then trigger its own landscape design requirement?
14 is a street frontage improvement agreement, not the landscaping plan.
So, to answer your question, no. The only thing that would trigger landscaping in the parking lot would be new parking lot. There was additional parking required, and they're creating a new parking lot. So, this is, this is all the applicant's ability to provide for the landscaping. What staff will look at would be the species and water consumption of those, of the plants.
Okay.
We have other, other codes that would come into play, such as the irrigation plan and the like, to make sure that the water consumption is low. So, but there's no requirement to install landscaping other than what was required on the original site plan review, which was the frontage landscaping.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we weren't.
Yeah, we're not missing anything. I think what I mentioned earlier is, you know, typically, they're putting in a, you know, there'll be some landscaping around that new restaurant, and the commission will have the ability to look at that. But that's associated with the restaurant itself, but not the parking lot.
Okay, good. And then, and then 15?
15, I think, was going to stay.
Yes, 15 was going to stay.
Right.
I think our understanding was that they will be submitting a revised site plan showing.
And it'll be, at the end of the day, it'll just be to your satisfaction?
Yes.
Right?
Staff will review it, and it'll be part of the file.
We don't have to make a change to that, just, they're just letting you know that, you know, we're working on old stuff. Okay, and then I think it was 18?
Correct.
Yeah, 18, I think the wording on there is, this is, they're not changing, they're not adding new buildings, right? So, I can't imagine that the fire department can require any change to sprinklering. I can't imagine they can change any requirements with regards to fire hydrants or any of this. This 18 sounds to me like it would deal with new construction.
Well, staff would, what staff would recommend is you just delete the second sentence to that condition, and the rest remain.
Okay, then, okay. Because whatever, whatever they're, whatever the department can require, then they have to meet that. But the department, yeah, okay, so I like that, I'm.
I would just would like to modify that, that in the second line on 18, improvements must comply with fire district requirements, period. Because I feel that that's, it's very important. But yeah, let's not name everything. Let's let the fire protection district decide.
Yeah, it says prior, the applicant is responsible for, oh, for.
Approval.
For just getting approval, they just have to get approval.
And improvements must comply with their requirements.
But.
It's a little redundant, but I think it's.
But the approval wouldn't be given unless they did comply with the requirements.
Right, like I said, it's redundant, but I think it's an important point. And that's why I would just like to eliminate the list.
Okay, so you want to put a period after requirements?
Yes.
You want improvements must comply with fire district requirements?
And just because, you know, fire protection is critical. And so, I just want to convey that.
To put a finer point on it, all right, very good. And there was nothing else after that? Okay, so I appreciate that clarification. So, then, in, when we have these large elephants, then there's a couple of different ways we can, we can go about this. I'll just say, first of all, that I really don't have anything additional that I would ask the applicant to do. I'm satisfied with what their intent is and what their proposal is. I'm also not concerned about the size of the 18-foot pole, which is sign, which is the subject of the variance. And I think in, along those lines, if and when that restaurant or that, whatever that's going to be, were to be built, I think it would then also diminish how large that sign might even seem to be then, because you'll have, you'll have more there where you have actual open space. I have comfort with everything. So, I'm going to start at this end of the room. Because I started at that end of the room last time. I'm going to start at this end of the room this time. And so the intensity of the comments was really located here, anyway. I think if we can get through your positions on these things, then maybe we can get ourselves to a motion. And I'm expecting we're going to be able to to pass this on, so.
I I agree, I I appreciate the the applicant and the engineer, Bobby stepping up and answering all of our questions. And my concerns really have been alleviated. I had thought of to ask the commission to just deny the variance, because I was confused as to everything that was going to go on, on that adjacent parcel. But I, to my thinking, they've addressed those concerns. I now appreciate that they're, since part of it is that they are going to voluntarily put in landscaping, therefore, the the second pole sign needs to be of a certain height, so that you satisfy your tenants. And also that the trash enclosure, that is actually kind of an errant. It shouldn't have been in, you know, what was submitted to us, because it is triggered by the future fast food development. So I, in fact, based on what I've heard, I would like us to consider bolstering support of the variance because of what was said. Maybe a line about, you know, not only is this not a special privilege, it is, it it is because of of the installation of landscaping to improve that visibility, as opposed to just, you know, putting a big sign down in a barren part of the parking lot. That's not what they're intending to do. So I, you know, I, based on what I've heard tonight, I I have changed my my thinking on the variance on on the sign. I now support that. I would like the commission to, we received a memo, so we'll have condition number thirty-one discussing shielding for the downlighting. I think, I know, Ryan, you expressed some concern about that. And not only are there a few residences up the hill, but there's also, you know, that little motel that got redeveloped, and there's a couple houses back there. So I think addressing that with the shielding is appropriate. I, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel about that lighting as far as the timers and motion sensing, so I'll let that play out, but, so we have condition thirty-one. I also would like us to consider another condition thirty-two regarding the reciprocal parking agreement to be filed, as staff discuss that, because I've heard, I think you and I agree, Mr. Carter, that we're a little bit concerned about, you know, where the parking is going to go and what's going to ultimately happen with the adjacent parcel. It could be that, you know, nothing happens over there, and we've got plenty of parking. But, or it could be that that parcel gets sold, you know, there there's all sorts of things that could, that occur that we can't plan for. However, having them record that reciprocal parking agreement would protect and alert any new owner that, you know, that's a requirement to keep it there. So those are my thoughts. I I hadn't really thought about how to bolster, as I said, further support the variance. I think it's important, you know, we have the staff report that it's appropriate, given the size. But I think also, in the future, you know, stating that part of this is that they they are accommodating us with this landscaping, and so that's why the new pole sign needs to be of a certain height, so I'll.
That sounds very good, I mean, I was able to follow that. I, the struggle, I was struggling, I, like, I I know I've seen some things in my report, where are they? Okay, Commissioner Carter.
Thank you, Chair. I'm uncomfortable with the number of aspects of this project, mostly having to do with what I kind of feel like is a lack of information and changes, kind of on the fly. You know, we've heard a couple of changes just here tonight that were not included in our initial discussion or in our staff report. This item, as it's presented to us tonight, I cannot support.
Can we itemize?
Yes, I'm not opposed to the project as a whole, of course. My concern has been and continues to be this second parcel and this future possible, the impacts from this future construction of this fast food restaurant. I also have issues, I have issues with the variance for the signage. I I think that that should be included with the construction or with the site plan review for this future construction. I believe that that sign should be considered at that time. I don't think it should be considered as part of this item. I also have issues with the parking. I wasn't sufficiently satisfied with the answer about the future parking requirements for this fast food restaurant. Everything else I like, you know, the elevations, the building, the color, the landscape. I I didn't realize the landscape was voluntary, so that eliminates a couple of the objections I had, because that is kind of outside of our purview. But specifically, this future fast food restaurant presents issues for me, and the lack of information and the changes, the patio, being there, not being there. I just can't support this as it's proposed to us here today, so I'm not sure.
Let me tease it, let me, let me take a stab at teasing this out. Let's talk about the eighteen-foot pole sign to the east. It al, it almost seems like part of the confounding aspect is the fact that it's on this quote-unquote other parcel. But if that were simply moved a little bit to the west, and it was on the same parcel we're approving now, the rationale for having that sign would remain. It's still a very huge shopping center, right? And you need to have visibility from both sides.
I agree.
So if if that's, if that's really, if that's true, then it, since the applicant owns all of it anyway, it should almost be immaterial where that pole sign is located, whether it's on one side of the boundary line or the other.
I guess my issue, and I go back to the parking again, we're not going to ask the applicant, when this comes before us, possibly in the future, when they, you know, build this building, which then triggers landscape, frontage improvements, we're not going to ask the applicant to tear down his sign and change parking configurations. I just see an issue down the road that it's going to be incompatible as proposed when this fast food restaurant is built, if that makes sense.
Yeah, let me, let me rephrase that. You you believe that the project as proposed right now, and particularly with the parking, and then with the subsequent development of the the fast food place, they would be unable, unable to meet the parking requirements for the entirety, right? Is that, is that a good summary? So the question then to staff is, does staff have that same concern? Or do you believe it will be entirely possible, percep, including specifically with the reciprocal parking agreement, that if everything is built out, what's proposed tonight, plus what has been suggested is possible for the future, that that the parking will be adequately mitigated?
Staff did not do that analysis.
They did not do that analysis.
Not analyze a future project not yet submitted to us.
So that 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 lends some credence, I think, to Commissioner Carter's concern that, all right, if we go ahead and approve this tonight, but they won't be able to to do the other, because they won't necessarily, possibly will not be able to do the other, because they potentially will not be able to meet the parking, unless we do some, what was the other place we did where the, the employees had to park down the street or something? I can't remember what the heck that was. And we're not, we don't want to get into that situation, I don't think.
Oh, they had the lease parking in a different.
Yeah, the lease parking arrangement.
I I'm just really uncomfortable with the lack of of information regarding this future development and how it affects the decisions we're making tonight. And that opinion, for me, was bolstered by the changes that were made just today by the applicant, as opposed, you know, changing the idea for merging the lots, and then, you know, is the patio in there, is it not? I just have an overall feeling of kind of playing fast and loose a little bit, and a lack of of information to make the decision for this entire project, with having this hanging over our head in the future. That's kind of what my, and I, not that I want to sink the entire project. Obviously, there are a number of aspects of it that I'm, that I think are wonderful, but there are issues, for me, that if they're included, I would have to vote no on it.
All right, fair enough. Commissioner Lepper?
Sorry, I need a moment, go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner.
First, I agree with the comments made by the chair regarding the excitement of this project. Leo Albeche put it in in the nineteen fifty's or early sixty's, and it's been a subject of blight in recent years. It's exciting, because this developer has the wherewithal to excitedly take it forward. That's good news. I do share Commissioner Carter's concerns about not having enough data. When we look at that design up there, it's very attractive, but it's not the final project, because we're told about landscaping that's described as voluntary, and nevertheless, will offer a change to what we're looking at. We're told that that landscaping impacts a sign, but we don't know what the landscaping is. The landscaping was raised in the context of fire hydrants and things like that, the kind of watering system that has to come in. We haven't looked at that. And frankly, I remember some of the first commission hearings I saw years ago, landscaping down to where they put a particular yucca plant was considered. And so I I would feel more comfortable if we had a complete project to look at, along the lines of what Commissioner Carter said. In addition, just a comment about signs. Those are, if I was in the developer's position, I would be making the same arguments, because if you've got a chance to keep that, it has some value. If your tenants want it, naturally, you want to protect that potential interest. But folks, we don't use signs now like we did in the nineteen seventy's. This is what we use. I had to find a branch of U. S. Bank in Sacramento that I didn't have time to get when I come back home. I used, I never would have found it if I looked for signage, because it was inside of a Safeway. I was able to get to it in time, because I use this all the time. I'm not even a tech guy. And I hope when people are traveling down Highway fifty, that they don't look at that sign, because the speeds we're going these days. In fact, when I go down a a place like Broadway at the speeds that are used there, and look at a shopping center, it's very busy to start looking at all those signs. You can start to get an image of the Dollar Tree store and Harbor Freight and grocery outlet because of the overall appearance. That's kind of like signage. But I do have concerns about voting on a sign when we know it, there's talk of bringing it back later. And so we're just not able to look at a complete project tonight, i- is my concern. Again, I'm excited about it, I want them to go forward. Obviously, I don't know what the demolition permit was, I've been working on it already. But I just feel uncomfortable, because that design that we're looking at is not the final view that we would see from Broadway, because, among other things, there's going to be landscaping. And landscaping could very dramatically.
Commissioner Lepper?
I just, I guess, I understand Commissioner Carter and some of Commissioner Smith's comments, but I think that, as presented to me, it's it's pretty straightforward in terms of of what they described tonight. And so I don't have any major issues with the project as presented, I really don't. I think that they've requested that we don't talk about their future building, whether it happens or not. It could happen in ten years, and we're going to sit here and say, well, the nine parking spots are going to shut this down right now. But we don't know what it's going to be, what if they don't want it to be a fast food restaurant and it's something else, and it doesn't need the parking spaces? I just think there's a lot of of what ifs that we're considering. I mean, even down to the motion lighting, like, I would be comfortable with them making the decision, whether they want to have the motion lighting or the permanent lighting, because I think, again, I agree that it's very considerate for the upper neighbors to not have the lighting on at all times. But I just don't see that within, and I, again, I understand what you're saying, but they've asked for us not to consider that. So if they want to build a future building there, and they don't have the parking, they can't do it, that's their decision. And and we don't have any reason tonight to say, but if you decide to do that in ten years, we don't know. How long has it been sitting in its current condition, right? And so we could have said ten, I mean, I remember us talking about this when I first started on the commission, what could happen there, what could it be? It's been four years, you know, so I'm I'm uncomfortable with the idea of, you know, and even including the boundary line change, I don't think that that is a huge difference between combining the parcels. I think that that will have the ultimate same outcome, for the most part. And so I am actually comfortable, and also the patio is on, was, when I was reading through, I understood that the patio was an option there, so, and I don't think that that is either going to impact noise, parking, use of space. I I just don't see them as being so impactful as to have such an opposition to moving forward with the project tonight as presented and detailed and described by the applicant, addressed to our questions. So I'm personally in favor of moving forward with the project with the conditions as amended, as discussed.
Thank you. So as I, as I consider this, as I look at this, we can throw the landscaping out the window. We have no authority to compel the applicant to put in any landscaping whatsoever. They can come in and repave it and restripe it, and, you know, look what we have there now, okay? So forget the landscaping, look what we have there now, and then look what's proposed. And if we got nothing more than this, that, to me, is a huge improvement. In addition, I heard Mr. Grotto say on multiple occasions, he has leases with tenants, including a new tenant, an important tenant, a national tenant, Harbor Freight. It's my belief that Mr. Grotto is going to want this project to be successful, and therefore, it's going to be landscaped, okay? That's that's all going to happen, even though we can't compel it. I think we have to forget about, I I think it really was confounding, frankly, to have the discussion about the future, possible future thingy. I think if that had just been left out, we might have had a lot less confusion. But let's, but so, but let's keep it in the context. I'm not saying it was bad to put it in, I'm thinking it made it perhaps more difficult to process this in context in its entirety. I share Commissioner Lepper's sentiment. I think that this project as proposed with a few minor adjustments, I think, is going to be beyond satisfactory. And I'm not, I'm not really concerned about what might happen with the other development down the road. The the phrase being, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. And if there is no bridge, we will build one, right? We will be able to work it out, because whatever is proposed there will be confined or constrained by what already exists. And so that will, by definition, form follows function, and you're only going to be able to have this function, so that's what your form's going to be. So I I respect the concerns expressed particularly by Commissioner Carter and perhaps Commissioner Smith. I I do respect them. I do not think that they create such a barrier that this project cannot certainly have a vote, and I would think a vote for for approval this evening, that that's really where I'm at. And I I will vote for the project with the recommendations by Commissioner Keeney. And then I had, then the only other recommendation, that the the signage lighting be off between the hours of midnight and six A. M.
Midnight and six?
Mix, midnight and six A. M., that the lights would be off.
I've lost my.
Signage lighting, I don't know about parking lot lighting, but signage lighting for sure.
I had a thought, I'd like to see if this is.
I'd like to see if this is acceptable, a couple of ways we could proceed, because I, I share your concerns about the signage. The existing sign to the west, that is what it is. And I think a 40, 40 by 22-foot tall sign is, is going to be big. It's going to be a big impact, but I honestly believe it's going to look better than the pole sign that exists. As far as the variance for the second pole sign, there's several ways we could talk about proceeding. We, of course, can deny that variance. We also could talk about requiring that second sign to be placed on parcel 030, which is, that's under the ownership, that's the whole project. I'm not, you know, you and I share a concern, Ryan, about the, both the parking and the signage over on that other parcel. I'm very comfortable with recording that reciprocal parking agreement and in the future, if they, you know, whatever, we'll, we'll deal with that. We can't possibly cover every eventuality tonight for what might occur on that other parcel. However, we, we have their intent, and if we record that reciprocal parking agreement, I think that, you know, protects the, the customers, the clients, the, the tenants. They have plenty of parking. They, they are assured of that. Back to the variance for the sign.
But...
Yeah, so, put the sign also on the original parcel 030 and have the applicant come back and submit maybe for staff approval, the, the final location on parcel 030 as opposed to 028. And then, Mr. Smith, you and I share the concern about, you know, it's 18 feet tall. And, yeah, that, that's kind of big. So, do you want to talk about asking them to redesign it? You know, I, I understand what you, I, I thought the same thing. You know, you held up your phone, and I'm kind of there. You know, I, I appreciate that business owners want to draw people, and this is our traditional way of thinking, and in 10 years, maybe people are simply looking at their phones all the time. You know, that case could be made, but do you, do you have something in mind as far as the, a smaller scale that, that would make you happy or you think would be fitting for the site?
I appreciate your efforts. Yes, if the sign is on this side, the sign for the east...
On the 030.
Which is position, then that reduces the problem with that. I do think that the signage is unnecessarily big. We just don't use signs that big anymore. Yeah, if you're a property owner and it has some property value, you want to keep it because it's harder to come back years later and get it larger. I just don't see the need for it. And the sign across the street for Schwel, no, we're stuck. It's already there. And Office Max, we're stuck, but it's big, it's glaring. You come into Placerville and you see that sign, you don't need to see it. If I want to get to home to Office Max, I know how to find it, and I don't really talk to my phone. It talks to me. I don't have to look at it. It just gives me directions. So, I think that's really the way it is now. So, I understand for a project this big, you've got to have some leeway, and it's going to be largely based on faith, but I still feel uncomfortable about the signage for the reasons we've described. I just don't think it needs to be, neither than need to be that large, and I feel uncomfortable about waiting some other time if it's going to be on another parcel. If it's on this parcel, we should look at it now. So, I don't know if that gets me any closer to what you're thinking.
I was wondering if you had thought about what size of sign would be more in keeping, you know, with how, the, the look that you would like to achieve? Let's, let's just say that, well, actually, they are entitled to two signs. So, what, what would the second sign look like? I like the idea of, in the design, they've, they've kept the same proportions, you know, it's kind of like, you know, a miniature scale model of the other large sign, but what do you think would be appropriate?
Here's what I think we see now at shopping centers. We see signs where they're listing what's available there.
Right.
There might be something large that tells you the name of the center, but underneath you have a series of signs below it. I suspect that that's what we have when we drive by Highway 50 and look at what's down on Missouri Flat. We see Target and a number of signs are underneath it. I may be mistaken, but these signs sound larger than Target. I just didn't look at and try to guesstimate measurements. So, I'm, I'm torn. One, I agree that it's an exciting project. We want to move it forward, but I just don't think the signs need to be that large.
Commissioner Lepper?
I disagree with changing the sign size. I think that they're complementary to each other, and I think that it will signify that second driveway that's down there. And so, if you're coming from the other way, I actually, I really disagree that we don't use signs. I use signs all the time, and also, I was just in Las Vegas where my mom owns a home, and as I'm driving down the street, I'm like, oh, look, they put in blah, blah, blah. Oh, look, that's there now. So, I actually think it is useful to people and especially those traveling through town to become aware. You're not necessarily driving down Highway 50 going, is there a Harbor Freight around here? You know, but then if you see it, then you will know that it's there. Grocery outlet, if people don't want to shop in Tahoe, they can stop here and do their grocery shopping. So, I actually think it's really important to the success and improved success of these stores to have that visibility because, well, yeah, we use our phones for things we're looking for. It doesn't mean that our phones tell us what is around without a sign. You wouldn't know that. So, actually, I'm really in favor of the signs as they are. I don't think that they're, I think they're really nicely designed. I think they're complementary to each other. I think that they are not in any way obnoxious, ugly. I mean, I, I think they're nice. And so, actually, I'm in favor of the signs as currently presented. If the big sticking point is moving from one side of the driveway to the other in order to be on the parcel, whatever, but as far as design, size, and, you know, to me, location, but if that's a big sticking point, I understand that a little bit more. But I actually think it's really nice to identify those two entryways. You don't want people slamming on their brakes, oh, there's the driveway. I, I think they serve purpose. And so, and I also agree with your wording earlier that we could just add to the variance in order to bolster the reasoning for it after the first, on number four, the variance request is appropriate given the size of the shopping center, comma, proposed landscaping, comma, and given that the project area has approximately blah, 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 blah. So, just adding in proposed landscaping as a point on number one under item four, I think would also say why we think that that height is appropriate, I think that height's appropriate because of the visual landscaping that we want it to rise above. So, if it's, if we're going to lower the sign and then you can't see it, what's the point of the sign? You know? And so, again, it's, it's beautifully designed. It's complementary to the other sign. It's within their rights to have it. So, I'm in favor of the sign as proposed. I don't think amending it in a small way is going to make a large impact.
I also want to recognize that, you know, they are taking that burden on themselves to go ahead and install the landscaping, so I want to be cooperative on that.
And then I'd like, I'd like to add to that because I, I think, I think the comprehensive context is possibly being lost. You have to look at the architecture, I think, that's being proposed, the gables. This, it's going to be dramatically different than what it is now. I, I think the sign in context, in relationship, in scale to, to what's going to be here, it, it won't seem like an 18-foot pole sign, beautifully designed, though it is. It's, it's going to be diminished. And then landscaping, add to that, and then add to that the, the future building. So, I'm in complete concordance with Commissioner Lepper. I, I think the sign is, is appropriate. It is well-designed. It, it, and I think it is necessary. I'm always uncomfortable, we can sit here and say, well, do they really need a sign, you know, kind of that big? And frankly, I don't want to be, I don't want people looking at their phone trying to find someplace, you know? I, you know, get to the general direction, but I, it should be easily defined by, by looking up and around. So, I am not at all uncomfortable with what's been proposed.
Chair Fran, if staff could just provide a brief comment. There seems to be the notion that we're, we're attempting to shrink the size of the, of the shopping center to actually split into two different parcels. You know, staff treats this as one shopping center comprising two parcels. And so, you know, regardless of the comments, I'll stay out of the comment regarding the size of the signs for now, but I think you want those signs further apart and not bring them closer together because they're, they're two, they're sort of like bookends of a very large shopping center with, you know, very lengthy frontage.
It's a, it's a huge area. It, it really is.
Huge area. And, and staff apologizes for all the confusion regarding the pad. Just to bring to your attention, if you look at the Placerville Cinema, there's a pad there that's never been developed for many, many years. There's also a pad where, sort of across the street where the Sears used to be, there's a pad in that parking lot as well, and that's been a pad for, for a couple, for decades. So, I just bring that to your attention, that who knows when that development will occur, but we will do a full analysis or may, if parking is not available, we're going to, that's going to be daylighted. So, I just, I just don't want that to be such a, an, an issue. And again, staff apologizes because we were, we were in kind of a rush. You know, we, we advertised to have the hearing this night because of the time constraints for Harbor Freight, and we're trying to work very closely with the applicant. So, I know things were, seemed kind of rushed, and there was a lot of moving parts of this, but it's actually quite simple. You're looking at an old 1970s site plan review. The conditions of approval are provided for you, minimal landscaping. That's all they're required to do, and that's what they have on the frontage. So, so, again, I, you know, staff apologizes, there's so much confusion over the landscaping. We didn't, we didn't mean for that. We just wanted to highlight that it's a real positive attribute to the project. Anyways, I'll leave it there, but I think the applicant may want to speak to it as well.
So, I totally appreciate those comments, Pierre, and I, and I'm, I'm actually going to call for a vote, I think, on, on just the sign itself. I really think we, I would like to see an up or down vote.
I was going to add, just to clarify. I think the comments that we've made about the value of signage is anecdotal. The burden of persuasion rests with the applicant. I believe for purposes of comedy, the applicants made that burden. They've, they've made success. So, while some of us may have reservations about it, the applicants met their burden of persuasion. That's the...
Thank you very much.
That's the analysis I follow.
I appreciate that. And, and I guess we're, the, the point I was going to make is, I don't see anything detrimental to the community for implementing what's been proposed. I, I see nothing but value frankly. And so, but I, we have this issue with, with the sign. I think I would like to get an up or down vote before I call for an up or down vote on approving the variance. There was, there was some language or a condition for that I didn't capture. What are we talking about on that? Where do I find that? Is it a condition of approval or is it in...
It's on page 30, excuse me.
Page 30 of the...
On page 30.
It's a finding. It's a finding, Roman numeral four, page 30.
Roman numeral four, item one. I proposed adding the words, comma, proposed landscaping, comma, after the parentheses.
So, okay, so you read it to me. The variance request is appropriate given the size of the shopping center and the land...
Comma, proposed landscaping.
Okay, comma, okay.
In order to further express why we believe the variance is justified.
Proposed landscaping.
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm going to move that we approve the variance request 2303 as, with the language, the findings specified on page 30 and 31 of the staff report, that's Roman numeral four, with the additional language, comma, proposed landscaping in the first sentence of item number one. I'm just going to make, with, with no other, with no other changes to the sign. That's, that's my motion.
Would you like a motion for the entire project?
No, I'd, I would be more than happy to entertain a motion for the entire project, and I will draw my motion.
I think I've captured...
I'm not sure we can consider the variance away from the conditional use permit in the section.
I think, well, actually, if, no, no, no. If we, I just want to see where the, where the commission is. If my, if commissioners say, yeah, I, I, I'll say, if I got, nobody's going to approve the variance, then I can't, we can't approve the entire project. That's, that's where I was going with that. I wasn't, this, this, they call it a straw vote.
You were trying to understand if people were going to get on board with the variance.
I'm trying to understand if I can get us past the sign. I want to understand if I can get us past the sign because if I, if I, if I've only got two of us that are cool with the sign and three of us aren't, then we're, we're kind of stuck, right? I'm trying to see if we can get past the sign. That's really what my intent was with that. But if you want to go ahead and try to float the entire motion...
We'll find out in discussion what people think.
And we can kind of see where we go with that. And Mr. Grotto, if you want to just, actually, sir, you've, you've been so accommodating. You have a comment?
I just have one comment.
Yes.
Just as a sense of scale, so you understand the height of the sign with reference to the buildings. The top of the gable of Harbor Freight is 35 feet in the air. So, when you consider the buildings that are behind this site, behind the frontage, they're twice the height of what this sign is out front. And also, when a pad project is brought forward and is compliant with parking, et cetera, the height, typical height of a pad building is 24 feet to the top of the parapet walls to screen equipment and things like that. So, it will be 25% or 30% taller than this other site. You'll literally see the building above the height of the sign. That's, that's on that other entry. So, I just want to make sure you have a sense of scale.
That was precisely, that was precisely the point I was trying to make previously, and, and that's precisely how, how I see it. Okay.
All right.
So, Commissioner Lepper?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the staff record as part of the public, a staff report as part of the public record. Make the findings in support of SPR 23-09 as listed on page 29 and 30 of the staff report. Make the following findings, make the findings in support of conditional use permit 23-02, request to allow two pole signs exceeding 10 feet in height as listed on page 30 of the staff report. Make the following, the finding in support of variance 23-03, request to allow two pole signs exceeding 10 feet in height with the added language after the parentheses, after the word city, of adding proposed landscaping as a reason for approving that variance. And conditionally approve SPR 23-09, CUP 23-02, and variance 23-03 located at 1426 to 1498 Broadway, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report dated July 18, 2023. The amendments to the conditions of approval should be that we remove the sentence from number five, condition number five, that states revised landscaping plan shall include shade calculations as outlined in chapter five, specific site requirements, A, general requirements, one, parking facilities, G, area of shade required. Two, or second, to remove condition number 14 discussing the street frontage improvement agreement. Amend number 18 to say, prior to issuance of permits for improvements, the applicant is responsible for El Dorado Fire Protection District approval. Improvements must comply with fire district requirements. I didn't know if we wanted to add on 20, to the best of applicant's ability when discussed about the utilities that Bobby touched on, or do you think that it's sufficient as is? I think we can probably leave as is. Okay, so, leave that as is. Add condition number 31 as stated in the staff memo dated July 18, 2023 regarding exterior lighting, and add condition number 32 that a reciprocal parking agreement will be filed with the city.
I'll second that motion. Commissioner Keeney, I yield to Commissioner Keeney for a second.
I second the motion?
Second by Commissioner Keeney. Friendly amendment to the motion.
I have one comment. Actually, I, I want to check with staff on condition twenty-nine. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring this to, during the staff report. It says the total aggregate sign area is approximately one hundred and fifty-four square feet. And I'm confused.
So am I.
Okay.
I think that could be removed from your condition. I believe there's analysis of signage.
And is that referring to, is that referring to the pole signs? Or is that referring to all signage throughout the land?
It starts off talking about two non, oh, non-illuminating.
Yeah, so I, I added that up to be six hundred and eighty-seven square feet. Just my rough calculation. Is that an acceptable number? And I realize that.
It should be fifteen hundred. In the, that's one fifty-four, I think. Actually, it should have been the fifteen forty number that was in the staff report, right? They're allowed two thousand something and they're only using fifteen forty approximately?
They are allowed the two thousand. And as I said, my calculation was actually based on the actual signage, not the, not the full eighteen by twenty or forty by twenty-two. So I'm not really sure what we need to accommodate.
Okay, I believe Chair Fran is correct, that it should be one thousand five hundred and forty-six square feet. And somehow that six got missed.
From page seventeen of the staff report.
Could you repeat? I, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
One thousand five hundred and forty-six square feet.
Okay, one thousand five hundred?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Yeah. And an aggregate.
Yeah, okay.
An aggregate refers to total signage on both of us, including the wall signs and pole signs.
I would like to make that amendment. I'm sorry, I, I didn't bring it up to her to number twenty-nine.
Yes, I will amend my motion to update condition of approval number twenty-nine to reflect the total aggregate sign area is approximately one thousand five hundred and forty-six square feet. I'd also like to amend my motion to include a number thirty-three condition, which is that lighting shall be reduced between twelve AM and six AM. Like outdoor, the, the sign.
Sign, sign, sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Between?
Lighted, lighted signs.
Twelve AM and six AM.
Twelve AM, okay.
Midnight and, like, AM, right? Yes, twelve, midnight and six AM.
All right, so we, we have a motion and a second duly issued. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Call for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
No.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepre?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. I appreciate the vigorous discussion by the commission. This decision is appealable within ten days to the city council. We're very excited about, I think regardless, we're all very, very excited about the value that this project is, is gonna bring. So thank you so much and good luck. All right, we have one more public hearing item. Does the commissioners want a break or do you want to continue to plow on? Or staff want a break? We will take a ten-minute recess, is all right? Five-minute recess.
No, five.
Five-minute recess.
Six point five.
Everyone's ready to go. We're gonna move on now to item eleven point one. Item eleven's continued items. This is a slight, a site plan review within a historic district, consideration of a site plan application. Modify an existing single-family home, replace wood windows with vinyl, paint the exterior facade, trim gutters and door, replace lighting fixtures visible from the public right of way, and consideration for acquired bids for the window replacement for the purpose of determining economic infeasibility. And let's see, Kristen, you have the staff report.
I do, yes, so you've already summarized the, the project, so I'll skip that. So the public hearing for this project was initially held on April eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three, where it was continued to June twentieth and then to July eighteenth in order to provide the applicant time to provide planning commission, three bids for window alternatives versus vinyl to be reviewed to support a finding of economic infeasibility and/or undue financial burden. The applicant provided bids to staff on June twenty-ninth. These bids are provided in attachment one of the memorandum for the planning commission review. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. And so the, the issue before us is, well, we have, there's three items involved with this. One is painting the exterior, we have the, the windows, the exterior facade, and then the lighting fixtures. Any questions of staff before I open the public hearing? And then, given, given the late hour and the fact that the applicant is the only one left in the audience, was it Kojalas, how do you pronounce that? Kojala, Mr. Kojala, I, I'm gonna take the prerogative of the chair to allow a little bit more of a give and take exchange with you. Let's say kind of a negotiation, as it were, as opposed to make your case, sit down, anybody have anything to say and bring it back for discussion. So I'm gonna open the public hearing because I'm required to do that. You might as well go ahead and step up to the podium. What I want to ask, though, to my fellow commissioners, let's put the windows aside for a moment. Did, are there any real issues with regards to either the paint, the painting scheme proposed and/or replacing the lighting fixtures visible from the street? Because frankly, I, I personally don't, and I don't recall what, if there were concerns about that because the windows really kind of consumed all the oxygen in the room as they typically do. So just to get a sense, because I want to know where to start with, with, may I call you Paul? So I don't mess up your last name. Kojala is that?
Kojala.
Kojala.
It's a, it's a tough one, so.
Okay, Kojala. So let's start with, let's start with the painting of the exterior facade. Why don't you go, tell us briefly, real quickly, what you're planning to do? Refresh our memory, my memory?
Um, so, as far as the home or as far as the project?
No, no, I want, don't, tell us what the, the painting scheme.
So it's just a, it's just a off-white to match the stone facade in the front as best, well, that's, the goal is to match it so it blends nicely. And then the, the roof's charcoal. And so we're looking at it, just putting a gutter line as, charcoal as well to, so it looks sharp. And then we're just looking at a red door because we refer to the home as the red house. And so we thought the red door would be cute to go with the red house.
I had a red door when I was growing up. It was black once and red once. So you're talking about painting the house itself from its, changing from its existing reddish tone to a, something to match the stone?
Yeah, exactly, a solid, a solid white.
Okay.
It's an off-white, but a solid white, no.
Oh, siding and trim, I see it here, siding and trim.
Yeah, no, no, no trim color.
So I'll just open it up to commissioners in terms of their feelings on that. I don't think, I don't think we're compelled one way or the other in the historic district with regards to the painting scheme. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I don't think we are, right?
Well, considering the age of this house, no. If it was a much older house, then typically we would bring a color palette that would be in keeping with the age period of the house.
Okay, but we're okay, so, so I'm, I'm comfortable allowing the applicant to paint his house the way he wants to paint his house and his door the way he wants to paint his door. And so, so that's, again, I'm doing that straw vote kind of thing. Commissioner Keeney?
Well, when we first discussed this, I thought that it would be important to maintain the contrasting trim, be it light or dark. So, you know, I appreciate that there's not a color palette for this particular structure. But the siding color proposed is alabaster. So therefore, you know, to continue the theme of contrasting, that would, you know, indicate that, so if that was light color, then around the windows, that would be a dark color. And, you know, there, that could either be.
There would be no color around the window trim.
I'm sorry, what was that?
There's not a plan to put a color around the window trim.
Let's, let's.
Or did I misunderstand you?
Let's hold off on the windows for now because.
So the, and, and then also just to, to finish my thought on that was, you know, actually, I guess the, the trim could be one of the front door alternatives. Also, I had noted, you know, in my research, I didn't see striking of front door colors on houses of that vintage. And, you know, I appreciate that applicant has provided us a, a link based on a Google search. But, you know, I had also done my own Google search and came up with a slightly different result. So that was just what I had remembered discussing as far as the paint colors. And I, you know, that, that was how I view this house and in keeping with, you know, the, the historic nature. To me, it, it just seemed to be a very modern change to go with very, not say it wouldn't look good, all white, just with the, the dark gutter and then a bright red door. So that was all the, that I remember about the paint colors.
But Commissioner Carter, go ahead.
I do recall that conversation now that we were talking about the ranch-style home. And we did have a discussion about contrasting.
Right.
Around the window frames. I'm having a hard time picturing it because it is red now with white trim. I'm having a hard time picturing it as a white house with a red door. Just visually, it's gonna be, yeah, it's like the windows will almost disappear into the end of the house.
That's right, that's something I, I think we go discuss.
We did have that conversation and you jogged my memory about that. Yeah, I don't, I'm just having a hard time picturing what the white house is gonna look like with the red door, but, yeah.
Well, this, this thing begs, this begs the question. Are we going to go down the road of specifying this? See, I'm, I'm.
I don't think we have the authority.
Okay, so I, okay, right.
We had, we had expressed, at least.
Our desire, okay, all right. So, okay.
So that's, that's about as far as we can.
Okay, so we're, we're happy to make suggestions, but we're not going to require it.
Right, and staff indicated we, there's no color palette.
The real, the real issue, correct me if I'm wrong, Pierre, but the real issue is what to do about the windows. At the end of the day, this is all about windows. Okay, so we don't have any authority to compel a change in the proposed lighting fixtures. I know we had some comments on them. Again, some of the, some of the distinctions of my fellow commissioners are lost on me. So that, that's just me. I mean, I can barely write my name on the ground with a stick, so don't ask me to paint anything. But, so I'm not gonna, I don't get too excited about those. I thought what was proposed is charming, frankly. So I don't know if, if somebody, other commissioners feel compelled to want something else. If not, I think we can then get into the real gorilla in the room, which is the windows. And so if I understand, sir, that what you provided us, you did as we asked and you went and you got some alternative, so what you have, the other alternative, so you have vinyl, right? Your, your preference right now is the vinyl.
Yes, sir.
Then you.
And I just wanted to get a clarification since we're going through that. The, your original proposal was for a line described as the Madeira. Is that the same price as the daylight max vinyl? Are they the same, roughly the same price or? In the list of bids?
I'm not sure which bid you're talking about then at that point. So there's three, there's three different, there's three different bids that I put in there. One's for wood, one's for, it's the fiberglass window that looks like wood. But it's, it's actually, it's a composite window that's kind of stamped so it looks like it's got wood grain in it. And then the vinyl window. I did talk to, someone mentioned about having them repaired and updated with, well, someone said triple-pane windows, but dual-pane windows in the existing wood frames. And the contractor laughed at me. And he wasn't gonna take his time to actually put a bid in because it would be ridiculously too expensive. Just to share that with you. I did get some other.
So no, no bid was obtained to, to retrofit your existing ones?
No, because when I talked to the contractor about it, he said it'd be so expensive that he just wasn't gonna waste his time to put that together. And then I did get a couple of other bids that I didn't include in here because I didn't like the, the window products themselves. So I just left what, the ones that, that I would consider, if that makes sense. So I had cheaper bids for windows from other companies, but they weren't as quality of a window as the, the ones that I have submitted.
All right, so, so Paul, the, the custom wood line are the fiberglass?
No, those are wood.
Custom wood line?
I forget the, I'm sorry, I forget the names of.
Okay, well, hold on, because I'm, I'm only seeing two numbers. I've got a number of twenty-two six and a number of eleven.
There should be a fifteen or sixteen.
Oh, oh, is, is way up here, okay. So the, the Marvin Infinity is the vinyl. And that's.
That's the fiber, the Marvin Infinity is the fiberglass?
Fiberglass, fiberglass, so that's sixteen. Okay, hold on, hold on.
I had a question about the daylight max.
Eleven, two, two.
Installate, so this is on the Gmail dated August twenty-third. It's the page two of your attachment. The installation will be no, what is known as a wood sash installation.
Yeah, that's because presently, the, the way, the, I didn't know how to bring the, like, the wall to you to show you this better. And I know that would, it would help with this whole thing. So i- if you think of these double-hung or single-hung windows that are, have the horizontal sash and they slide up to open, some slide down to open as well, is what they are, is there's, there's a frame that's put around the outside. That frame doesn't get messed. And then these windows get pushed in against that wood frame. And that starts the support system and then it's closed on the inside. So all the work happens on the inside. So nothing happens on the exterior as far as the wood goes. It's there as far as the trim and as far as the, the casing around the window goes. And so the windows are just pulled out from the inside, the trim's removed from the inside. And then all these windows are the same. The wood window, the vinyl, as well as the fiberglass window, they're all the same. They just come in from the inside, they take out the inside trim, they put them in, they seal them and they screw them on the sides, they seal them, make sure they're level, and then they put the wood trim back on.
And so the, the wood trim's on the inside, so on the outside, your trim's not disturbed.
Nothing changes on the outside except for the, the sash around the window, that comes out.
On the inside?
On, from the inside.
From the inside, on the inside of the, the building, right.
So if you, like, the frame of the window, that whole, just the part where the slides are, well, not all these, they're all single-hung, so, so the ones up top, it's got a frame around it that holds the glass in. That frame comes out. That frame and glass come out and a new frame and glass go in. But they just get reset with inside of the existing structure, the existing frame.
Okay, that's, I've, I've replaced some windows, so that's the way that we did that too on an, an older house. So the outside, and we had that described the last, or a previous application that came before us. So thank you for that explanation.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of cut to the chase a little bit here. And this is not necessarily for you, sir, so.
Okay.
But for my fellow commissioners. We, in addition to the information he has brought forth to us today, we also recently, within the last couple of weeks, we had another window replacement. And that was an Anderson product that was brought to us, which was wood, a wood window with a, there was a vinyl treatment somewhere, right? Okay, vinyl coating. And we found that to be a suitable alternative. And I don't know if you're familiar with this, this particular window, but there, there.
I do, my understanding is the wood's on the inside, though, and not on the outside.
Correct.
So that.
But it meets the requirement for a wood window.
But from the appearance from the outside, that doesn't change anything because it's vinyl on the outside and wood on the inside. So from the street, it doesn't change what, what.
You're right, correct, and, 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 yes, sir, you're, you are correct. But the, the guidelines and standards. the, the guidelines and standards that we operate with actually deal as much with the composition of the reconstruction as it does with necessarily the appearance. And, and so the issue is meeting, to meet the requirement is, we need, we ultimately need to do wood. That, that's, that's what's driving it. So, so vinyl, so again, I'm back to my commissioners now. You can just hold on right there. So vinyl is out, right? Okay. And, and, and I know that there, in this particular neighborhood, there are a number of homes that also have vinyl. And that's, while that's a fact, that doesn't guide what we do because we're still trying to adhere to the city ordinance, which is the utilization standards and guidelines. So the vinyl, vinyl to me is, is really out unless there was such a huge difference. And that's what the purpose of tonight's meeting is, to look at the feasibility, right? So, so I'm gonna say vinyl is out. I'm also gonna say that the fiberglass is out because it's also, for the same reason, it's not wood, any more than vinyl is not wood, right? So vinyl is not wood, fiberglass is not wood. So it, it seems to me that unless, unless we can find an economic feasibility argument, that we should direct Paul, the applicant, have you priced those windows, those Andersons? Do you have any idea the ones we're talking about that are, that are wood on the inside and then they got the vinyl? Have you priced those?
I did not price those.
Okay.
That wasn't a product I actually wanted. So, I mean, there's got to be a little bit of room for me to put something.
You're trying to work with halls, right?
Yeah.
As your contractor, so.
Not every vendor sells.
Right, so these are the ones that they offer.
I did get some other vendors out there, but I didn't like their product, some of their products as much either. Part of this is I want a durability thing. And that's where I don't want wood windows, is they're not durable. They take wood, they take maintenance, they take repainting, restaining. And, and so I'm trying to avoid that. Well, I'll let you.
Right. Commissioner Le, did you have a comment, Commissioner Lepper?
No, yeah, go ahead.
So, again, the reason why I'm going back to that Anderson product, excuse me, I think I got jalapeno juice in my eyeball. We go back to that Anderson product. It meets our requirement. Did you actually look at those, that Anderson product?
Well, I considered the fiberglass ones to, with that clad front on them, to actually meet the same requirement. I didn't realize, because in all honesty, it's all about the exterior. Nobody, nobody cares about the interior. And that wood's all on the interior, so I didn't think it really mattered.
Right, I, I understand. And it's, we had, we had, another applicant came after you, a couple of weeks after you, and they brought this product. And we had a long discussion about how, at the end of the day, these are wood windows. The fact that they put some vinyl on the, on the outside of the wood doesn't change the fact they are still wood windows. And so they, they, they meet the requirement. And I believe that they are reasonable in terms of their pricing. So the reason I'm saying this is, one more, one more trip, get that, get those bids. And we, one thing we could do is we could say, we'll, we'll either deny your project as, as requested, or we'll say, you can meet the requirement with those windows there. And we believe that they're economically feasible. So I, I'm gonna stop there just because I, I kind of think this is what it's gonna boil down to at the end of the day.
I guess I'd like to know more about the construction of the fiberglass. Is it fiberglass throughout? As we just described, this Anderson four hundred is vinyl clad onto wood. Is this just fiberglass texture on the outside?
Yeah, so I don't know if you've seen, a lot of people are using for their front doors, are using like a fiberglass front door because it looks like wood, but it doesn't warp, and it doesn't shrink, and it doesn't wear out. It's that product. It's, it looks like that. I think I sent you a brochure in the thing. Probably should have put a PowerPoint together. I didn't, I'm such a small fish in this little stuff, in this kind of stuff, so I didn't really think about putting a PowerPoint presentation together. But, so it, it's got a wood grain to it. And so, to me, that matches the appearance because, in all honesty, nineteen fifty's, they used aluminum windows, they used steel windows, they used all kinds of different windows. They didn't use vinyl windows, they didn't use fiberglass windows. So, I mean, I, I know you guys are doing your job, but this is a nine hundred fifty, it's like, it's the size of a patio you guys were talking about in, in that project. So, which I'm glad you guys approved because I, I'm super excited to see that part of town get cleaned up. But, so, so for me, like, you guys have the ability to do whatever you want to do. You can choose not to, to follow the guidelines. That's your choice. And, and, and you can, you can do that. I, I was at work one day and I had a roofer fall off the house the night before, and we went in and he was dead in the morning, and his wife was distraught. And her kids were at school already because he hadn't woken up yet. And, and we're not supposed to drive other people's cars, but I took her to get her kids from school because she was not in the, in the drive because that was the right thing to do. Like, it, it was, could have gotten me in a lot of trouble, but it was still the right thing to do. And I think in this situation, these homes, these, they're nineteen fifty's ranch homes. Like, the community's not going to care as long as I clean them up. I've already taken out ten grand worth of trees that were going to fall and cleaned up the whole front yard. I mean, you couldn't even see the house. I bought the house because there was a tree sitting on top of it. So I think like, you could actually approve the vinyl windows and we can be done with this thing. And it's going to look sharper and it's going to match actually.
Well, let me, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. And I, I'm very sympathetic to your position, trust me. First of all, your, your little nine hundred square foot home is just as significant in terms of what we do as a three thousand square foot home in the historic district. It's no different, okay?
The difference is the nineteen fifty's, not eighteen fifty's.
I have to finish. And, and we, we are not, at the end of the day, totally free to do what we want. Because if we, if we don't follow those guidelines, somebody is going to appeal this to the city council. And I can guarantee you that the city council will uphold the appeal and will deny the project. So what we're really trying to do here, and, and, and I'm, I'm sure you get this, what we're really trying to do here is to find the, the pathway that's going to work the best. It won't be a perfect fit, but it's going to work as best we can for you and as best we can for us. And the, the best option that we have seen so far that's come along is what we saw a couple of weeks ago with this, this vinyl over wood. And Commissioner Keaney, the thing about the fiberglass is I don't see how the fiberglass would meet the requirement of, of replacing.
But if we look at the economics, which is what our discussion was, and so that is the, the caveat in the Secretary Interior Standards, if it is not economically feasible.
I agree with you. And you know, I have made that argument any times.
Right.
And the, the pricing on the, on the fiberglass is what we had that number?
So we've got.
That's the sixteen, okay.
Yeah, we've got three prices.
So then I, I guess where I am then is I, because there is a product that I think meets the requirement.
Well, I, I don't think we need to absolutely require the Anderson window. I think the gelled win, as described, is a, is a custom wood line. And it's, I think it's a solid wood.
Okay, that's the twenty-two six hundred.
We can either have the applicant, you know, install, i- if that's the way the commission feels, we go with that. Or the option of, you know, if he wants to go get another bid with another contractor for this Anderson window that we've already discussed and we're more familiar with, I think either one would be acceptable as far as meeting the, like, boy, we said we're not going to use that.
So, right, we have a different terminology for it. So are you saying that we would give him the choice of the, the gelled win?
We could, the gelled win, custom wood.
We would, we're going to deny the vinyl outright. Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense for where we're, we're at. We would deny the vinyl outright. We would say the options for the applicant are the gelled win. He's already thrown the wood option out himself. That's fine. He would either use the gelled win, or he could use something similar to the Anderson product. Doesn't have to be that product, but something similar. That's what we would approve. Is that's kind of where, is that kind of where you're going?
That's in keeping with our last approval.
Right, I, I kind of think that's where I, I would be at. That works for me. Commissioner Lepper?
I just have a question. And I, I wasn't here at the last one, so nice to meet you. But, and I did watch it and everything, so I'm caught up. But remind me, was it that every window in this is visible from, okay, yes. I was just making sure that, because it wasn't in here, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that was the thing. Every single, we, he couldn't catch a break.
Yeah, I can see that.
So, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
Just a couple of observations. First, it's not something where we can ignore it. These, it's an ordinance. We're obligated to follow the law. I've only been on the commission sometime this year. I can't account for what was done in the past. So commenting about how many other people have vinyl windows, I'm not responsible for that, nor are we. We have no idea what the reasoning was, or if somebody just snuck it in and there was no enforcement. We just don't know. But we are on an obligation to follow it. When it came to the last consideration, we have really two public policies to look at. One is the city and the state for that matter is concerned about energy conservation. And the other is historic preservation. So in the last one that we looked at, it was wood, but it was also like for like. The windows in this Victorian house had large panes of glass, which was unusual for that period. They often had sections, square sections, but it wasn't compartmentalized that way. So what they were replacing it with was something that was like the other. What's often difficult when people talk about vinyl windows is they're talking about double paned windows. And it just happens to be that most of them are available in vinyl because it's cheap. And the difficulty when you replace the window is the frame that you've taken it out of is going to leave some gaps. You come in, a contractor's going to put in wood around it, but it's going to have those air gaps. And then the design of the vinyl is going to have air gaps. What was presented to us last time didn't have those factors. So those are some of the comments I have. The other is when we have these comparisons, like eleven thousand versus twenty-two thousand, we're talking about initial costs. But you haven't given us the cost benefit analysis. We don't know whether those twenty-two thousand dollar windows will, over the course of the next ten, twenty, thirty years, save you more money. And does the rate, the cost of energy is going, that's a big factor to look at. We don't have that to look at. That's the difficulty we're presented with.
Warranty, the warranty's significantly less, which tells me that they're not as good of a product in the long run.
I'm sorry, I'm having a difficulty hearing you.
The warranty's significantly less on the wood windows than it is on the vinyl windows. So that tells me right there that there's issues with them that they're not willing to cover. One has a forty year lifetime warranty, the other one has, I, I don't even remember, but it was like twenty, I can look it up. It's, it's in that email.
I, I looked at the, and I can't offer you testimony. I'm just saying that I've looked at brochures before. And it gets difficult to look at because they'll tell you, they have different names for some of the products. We've had them discussed as whether it was vinyl or not vinyl, or a trademark name. I don't know what variation of plastic it was. So when somebody offers you a guarantee, that's not really what we can rely on. Because we don't know that that necessarily supports your conclusion that it's a better product or that they are standing behind it. There could be all kinds of reasons why they choose to guarantee a particular product. Ultimately, the burden of persuasion rests with the applicant. And, and we have to struggle and see, have you come up with something new that can persuade us that the staff recommendation is in error? And I'm not sure it's done. That's the difficulty. Is that burden of persuasion? There, there is on the city website, a link to a presentation that was done for the city and by the historical association, the Heritage Association for the county. And it talked about the, the benefit of these guidelines. There is a, contrary to popular belief, it actually does increase property values. It does increase sales revenues for sales tax revenues. All I know is, the applicant has the burden of persuasion. And I'm, I'm trying to struggle to hear it, and I haven't heard it.
So I, I actually spoke with Karen Tustin, who is actually the only surviving, I believe, city council member that actually signed this ordinance into effect. And she said it was really designed for the turn of the century homes, not a nineteen fifty's home. And she laughed that I was having to struggle with this deal with a, a little ranch home from the nineteen fifty's. She's like, it's just there because Darlington is a good line to draw the distinction by, not because it's actually a historic home. None of the homes in here are on the California's recognized list. So it's really just an ordinance, and I agree with you. It, I, I don't mind keeping up with the appearance. I want things to look good. I, I'm all for that. You know, I'll have it landscaped very nicely in time. Unfortunately, I got to deal with figuring out what they're going to do at the creek before I do anything, and some drainage on Darlington. But these homes weren't the intent of why this was put into it. And I didn't want to bother Mrs. Tunston and bring her in here tonight to, to share this with you because there's other issues that she's dealing with. But, but like, it's a nineteen fifty's home. I, I think we need to recognize that it's really not a historic home. The intent of the ordinance was to preserve the historic district of, these are, this is Gold Rush era. Those nineteen fifty's home aren't Gold Rush era. The community's not going to care about vinyl windows on these homes. They're going to say, wow, he's done a great job of cleaning up that mess that was there, and it looks sharp. And, and if you walk down Cedar Ravine from Main Street down to Darlington, the homes with vinyl windows look sharp. They don't look bad at all. And they look better than the ones with wood windows because the wood windows are all out of shape and, and not in, in good order, in good repair. And, and I think like, something needs to give and something needs to change. And like, you guys can get denied, and that's fine. But there, there's a point to where like, like, there is a feasibility thing. We're, well, I'm not a big corporation. I'm not a developer. Like, this is a family home. Like, like, I, like, I know it doesn't seem like much to you, but ten grand's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. No, 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 it's, it's a lot of money.
To me, it's a lot of money. And so.
It's a lot of money.
So I, I think there's got to be a little give and take here. Like, I'm doing a good job with the property. I'm dealing with the city and improper drainage issues that they have. Like, like, and, and like I said, I took out trees that would have taken out homes because they were bad. And, and I think like, this whole thing and this hiccup over putting in wood windows, wood windows aren't good because they, they warp and they stretch. And, and I know you think like, there's air gaps in vinyl windows and stuff. The way they do these, they build these windows for my, for, to replace the exact same ones that are in there. So they get built to put in there, and, and there are no gaps because they seal them up. So it is just as energy efficient, otherwise they couldn't do them anymore. Like, the energy efficient part, I don't even bring up because they're all the same energy efficiency.
Right. Commissioner Lepper?
Yeah, so I do want to say that I am very sympathetic to your situation. And those were actually my comments when I was reviewing it. One, that this is not a historic home. And two, that it is on the edge of the historic district. I wonder, maybe this is better directed to staff, is there a potential that the requirements for the applicant would change after our meeting with the city council on August 29th?
It's very difficult to speculate.
Yeah.
But we're, you know, we've actually hired a consultant that specializes in rehabilitation of historic structures. So they're going to give a presentation, they're going to field questions of both planning commissioners and city council members. And so we hope to get out of that, at least staff hopes to get some direction then, from the council as to where we're going to go. Are we going to adhere to the Secretary Interior Standards for homes that are within the historic districts? Are we going to do something greater? Are we going to do something less? It's really at the purview of, of that discussion with this body in the city council. So it's really difficult to speculate.
Yeah, yeah, because that struck me that I feel like if we require the, you know, twenty-two thousand dollar wood windows of this, and then next month we come together and go, you know what, we don't prioritize that as a city that nineteen fifty's homes have to have wood windows replaced in the historic district. Like, we've seen other ones that haven't had that requirement be put on them. All right, I guess I should say, I feel like it's been a little bit inconsistent in the time that I've been on. Would it be an option, or maybe a recommendation to the applicant to wait until after that conversa, is there a, a necessary urge? Is there a necessary urgency around it? I mean, obviously, I know you've waited. Like I said, I'm really sympathetic to it, and so I'm actually trying to, like,
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I mean, I would like to at least paint it and stuff, like, I got some raw wood on there. I want to, like,
It's the windows that are really...
But the windows could, I don't care.
If the windows could wait, like, until after our conversation at the end of, yeah.
It's a public forum.
We're having a public forum next month.
Public meeting, and in fact, I mean, your home, you're such, is more of a case study. I mean, yeah, you somehow got, the Darlington line is almost arbitrary, yeah? An argument can be made, it's almost arbitrary. Okay, so the line was made, it captured this particular home. The standards and guidelines, though, say any structure over 60, is it 60 years? Isn't that the, I think that's the number. 60 years and older, right? So 50 years and older?
But when the ordinance is put in effect, it was only like 20 years.
So the Secretary of the Interior's standards and guidelines says 50 years and older, those structures are subject to these guidelines, that they are, whether they're in a historic district or not, 50 years and older represents periods within our history, okay?
Well, actually, I think it's, the interior standards are actually written for buildings that have been designated already as historic, and it doesn't speak to historic districts. And, but, but what communities up and down, you know, across the country, especially in California, they've applied the standards to their historic districts. Now, you know, we can argue if it's arbitrary or not, but the fact is, it exists before us today where that line was drawn. Unfortunately, what Ms. Tustin told you wasn't codified in the ordinance. You know, that is her recollection, and, you know, I appreciate that. I, you know, I think it's a, it's a fair argument that you make. But this is what we have today. We also have heard that it's in the, the city has decided to protect the historical district. And, you know, we've talked about, and the city is, has talked about updating the inventory. Well, that hasn't happened today. So what our job is to do is to protect the historic district to the best degree possible. And, you know, the way I see it, we talked about this when the application came before us before, is there is the exception for economic infeasibility, and that's really what we have to decide tonight, is has the applicant proven his case that we can make a finding that it is an economic burden? It is infeasible to either, well, you know, he could not even provide a bid to restore the existing windows. But then he has provided a bid for a wood window that is two times the cost of the vinyl. Now,
Or the option is to not work on the windows yet, though.
And what I want to bring everyone's attention to is the middle ground, the fiberglass with the texture. To protect the integrity of a historic district, I think that we could make that finding that the textured fiberglass window replicates the look and feel of a wood window, but also fits within the exception allowed under the SOI standards.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can make, I can get there. I'm just not. I'm not sure I can get there. And tonight, by the way, we don't necessarily have to make the infeasibility. If he's going to hold off on the windows, that decision doesn't have to be made tonight. I thought what Commissioner, where Commissioner Lepper was going was, well, maybe after our workshop in August, something else might happen. And with regards to the historic district, again, I agree, and I support preserving historic districts. But I think this home is a case study for, is this really what we're talking about? We're talking about historic districts and historic homes. It's certainly not historic in anything other than the fact that it's old in 50 years. Beyond that, it's nothing historic about it, and it's on the wrong side of Darlington. At the end of the day, it's on the wrong side of the tracks.
Well, we could add that to the finding tonight, is that while it resides in a historic district, and I think that's actually stated in the staff report, it is itself not historic. So I think that could bolster a finding, should we decide we want to allow, we would then be able to approve the whole...
We wouldn't get beat up for using vinyl. We can say fiberglass. We're not going to get up for using vinyl.
I'm not so worried about the fiberglasses, what, or, you know, I think, I think that's a nice alternative as well. Except at our last meeting, when we reviewed those other windows, staff specifically said visually, it's not what's important. It's what it's made of. And so the reason that we approved those last ones is because it was made of wood, not because you looked at wood. And so the fiberglass, like, I almost think then at that point, we could improve the vinyl because we're not approving wood, and I would be inclined to improve the vinyl at that point. Because you're now incorporating a different material, and we're not supposed to consider visually what it looks like. And so I just think that we're being incon...
I disagree. You know, that is one interpretation. To me, preserving the integrity of the historic district is the visual. I, to me, that is, we talk about the view from the street. You know, we're not allowed to walk up and scratch the window, but, you know, whatever is the reasonable distance from the sidewalk, from the street. And, you know, we, with the permission, the patience of the applicant, we could postpone this until after the workshop. We don't know what's going to happen, what's going to result of that, or when.
Yeah.
Are we going to update or even change one way or the other our ordinance? But, so that's, again, you know, we can't predict that.
And again, I actually was pretty comfortable with the fiberglass, when, my initial interpretation. But then it jogged my memory of that discussion that we had about the material, and I wasn't sure if we would be conflicting with ourselves. Personally, I think the fiberglass is a nice, again, kind of compromise of the visual, if that is allowed to be considered. And of much closer to the price of the vinyl than the wood, which I think is pretty outrageous for this kind of house, the $22,000 wood. But I think if the applicant is amenable to it, I would, I would say the best idea might be to wait and consider, waiting until after our meeting.
That's at the end of...
At the end of August.
The ordinance requires repair first. If you can't repair, replace with exactly what's there. And the only option you have out of that is, it's economically infeasible to do that, right? And then, if you do economically infeasible, vinyl is still, like, the city council's made it very clear, they don't want vinyl. They've pretty much taken that option off the table. And, and so that's why, I don't know where, I don't know where I am with fiberglass. We could approve the fiberglass, and we could, and, you know, then it's a crapshoot if somebody appeals that, right? And I don't want to, I don't want this gentleman to lose the appeal, you know, because of something that we did, thinking that more fiberglass would be a good alternative. Because I don't know if it's a good alternative. I really don't, in terms of meeting the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines. So my inclination is, is the best option is the vinyl over wood. We were comfortable with the vinyl over wood. Or, that's one option. The other option is, well, first of all, we approved the lighting fixtures he wants, and the painting scheme he wants. You're good to go on that. And then you just hold off on the windows until after the workshop and see if we can't get some better direction from council. And I would really like to use your home as a case study, because we need help. You can tell by our discussion that we need help. I need help. I don't have confidence. I really don't.
Actually, I think, like, pardon me out of principle, is like, if you deny it, I was kind of like, good, I want to appeal it. Because, like, something needs to give. Like, there's got to be, like, hey, we're going to consider these homes built actually in the 1800s or the turn-of-the-century as historic homes, because we want to protect our history of our area and our district. The ones in the district, we're going to make sure that they're aesthetically pleasing, like, some, we're a little bit too black and white, letter of the law versus, like, what really needs to happen. And I do think we do need to keep it looking good, aesthetically pleasing. Like, honestly, those Anderson windows, they're vinyl on the outside. They don't match the...
We know. You're right, they're vinyl on the outside, but they're made of wood.
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying. So there is one other thing, too, like, the repair or replace like-for-like. Like, we can't do that energy efficiently nowadays because they're single-pane windows. So the like-for-like's out the door as well. So I would really like to at least, like, get it painted and do the other stuff. And I will be, I'll figure out a way to be at that meeting, because I do think, like, there has to, like, something has to give, like, like, I understand the principle and the idea behind the ordinance, but there's got to be, like, it's got to be done right. And right now, it's just a blanket statement versus, there's 1980s homes in this, on the street. Like, who cares about a 1980s home? Like, they're not built well, and there are all kinds of issues anyway. So, and so I just think, like, something has to give, and so I'm willing to postpone. I mean, at this point, I'm so far behind everything I want to do anyways, it's like, whatever. So I'm for, you know, wait until after that, as long as I can at least get some of the other stuff done.
So I'm going to go to Commissioner Smith, and I'll come to you, Commissioner Lepper. Commissioner Smith?
I guess the first concern is this description of it as not being historic. If it's 60 years plus, it's historic. As you look down, and I can understand an owner's frustration, and all the budget considerations I have in mind. But I'm troubled by suggesting that that district is, you know, has to be a certain time period in order to be historic. There's a whole bunch of different types of houses there, from a whole different types of privileges. As you come down Marshall Way, the one directly across is a lovely place, built, I'm guessing, about the 1920s arts and crafts, stuck on the surface. That's not Victorian, it's not 1800s, but it's historic. I grew up in a house that, like his, on Carson Road. It was built by Kenny Wilkinson. My parents, you know, coming out of the Air Force, first house they had. That house has been maintained the same way it was in that period. And it's historic. Doesn't mean I like it, but it's historic. So it's very difficult for us to start getting into these aesthetic judgments about, well, it's not historic because it's really old, it's kind of crappy. What difference does it make? I'm actually willing to let him pursue his other option, which is we deny it, then he can appeal it. That's a very simple way to do it, because the frustration I hear from him is not going to be satisfied tonight, otherwise. So if he wants us to deny it and he can appeal it, he's ready to go. He doesn't even have to wait 10 days. He can do it in less time. That's my inclination. But I just don't want to denigrate the district and say, oh, well, that's not historic because it's built in the 1950s. It's a ranch-style house. Sorry. That's it. I own a bunch of houses right now that cover different time periods. There's one that's built by 1950s. It was owned by Senator Dillinger. His son-in-law built it. I don't like it, but I'm keeping it exactly the way it was. Asbestos shingles on the outside, don't like it. I'm keeping it partly for financial reasons, because it's really expensive to remove asbestos. But, hey, that's historic. Doesn't mean I like it, but it's historic.
But there's a certain element of arbitrariness to this. So if the home is 40 years old, if it's 40 years old, it's not, doesn't meet that historic designation, so a property owner can make all kinds of modern improvements they want. And then they can go another 40 years. And even though now the house is 80 years old, well, can, he can make more modern improvements, because now the new improvements were what was in the home originally. And so I have a real, I think, while we all agree with the intent, I think the application is challenging, because this home, don't take this the wrong way, sir.
It's all right.
This home does not necessarily contribute any significance, period or otherwise, to the community of Placerville, historically speaking. It just doesn't. Yep, ranch houses were just plethora. They were everywhere. I think this is really getting us, again, into, we need the workshop, and this is really one of the most frustrating things. We have two options here. We can, we can deny, and you can appeal. That certainly is an option, as Commissioner Smith said. I hate for you to have to go through all that hassle. We can approve the painting. I'm not even sure the painting and the light fixtures are in our purview. We even need to do that, right?
Is there a project that we have to approve?
We can just postpone, and I'm confused, Pierre, if he needs his approval, if he needs our approval to paint and do the lighting. Does he need our approval for that? I mean, we can make a motion, we can make a motion to approve...
The lighting fixtures requires planning commission approval.
The lighting fixtures do? Boom. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to move, I'm pretty sure, to approve the painting scheme that the applicant desires and the lighting fixtures he desires, okay? And that we're either going to, we could take no action on the windows, right? Or we could deny them, or we could postpone action on the windows. We could postpone a decision on the windows until, what do you think is cleaner, to just to deny the windows and make him appeal? Or just, or postpone it?
You can certainly postpone it to a date certain after the workshop.
Fantastic. We'll do that, so it allows him to get his painting done and his light fixtures done. And then we can have the workshop, and maybe we can get some guidance from council, and have a broader discussion. So, is anyone willing to make a mo, I think Commissioner Carter will make this motion, because he hasn't said anything.
I have a lot to say, but...
Oh, okay, go ahead, sir.
No, it's okay. The action that you're proposing, I'm okay with waiting until after we get more direction. Because we do still have, and one of my major points was from the original staff report, we still have the SEQA designation to deal with also, because it was staff's opinion that even if we did fiberglass, that would not comply with SEQA.
Right.
And so that's going to affect that decision also. So, yeah, as we, the, as you propose this, yeah, I'm okay with that. And I wouldn't have anything else to add.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion? If not, the chair will.
I would move that we approve the paint scheme and the lighting fixtures as proposed by the applicant, and delay the window decision to a date certain, which I guess you guys would have to give us after the joint workshop.
I think you have to memorialize it tonight, if I'm not mistaken. Otherwise, we'd have to renotice it.
Yeah, what's the date?
So I don't know if we'll have the first meeting in September, because it's the day after Labor Day.
That's what I was hoping you would let me know, what a safe date to be timed certain on.
Yeah, so I think it might be the 19th, if that's, I haven't looked at a calendar. September 19th.
Okay, so I would delay the decision on the windows to a date certain, September 19th.
Is a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Sir, hold on.
Well, Pierre just said that we don't necessarily cancel the meeting after Labor Day. It's if we don't have a quorum. So that's really up to you guys, if it's...
What would be the first?
The 5th or the 19th.
5th would be the first day, then.
Yes.
And I do think we should really seek some clear guidance from council on this particular situation.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
During that meeting. So I think we could do the 5th. I don't think we need an extended period.
Absolutely. I want to do it as early as possible, so, yeah.
That's perfect.
Okay, I would delay it to a date certain, September 5th meeting.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
No.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay, terrific. So, Paul, you understand what we've done. You can move forward with your painting and your lighting fixtures. We have postponed a decision on the windows until September 5, which is after the workshop with city council. And we will really press council to provide us some guidance, not only on the SOI in general, but on your specific case. But I really do think this is a kind of a unique case. And I, I think that'll set some real parameters. For me, it'll set some parameters. That's what we did.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
Commissioner Keeney, can I just, can I ask a question, or is it, like, not allowed? I don't know. How come you said no? I'm just curious.
Okay, yeah, in public, why? My reason for the no vote is that I think you've proven your case and that we would have been able to make a finding for the exception to the SOI standards. And this is something that we're, I will definitely vet at the public workshop. You know, I see your point about the economics, and the definition of a historic district is a moving target. So, you know, because it was put in place, thinking of very old structures, the fact is that ordinance has been in place now for quite some time. Other structures are worth preserving, as Mr. Smith pointed out. So we, as a city, you know, we need to clarify what it is we really want out of, when we say preservation. And so with guidance from an expert at this workshop, I think we'll get clarity. So thank you for your patience, and good luck with everything else, all the other elements of your project.
Thank you.
Staff would just like to add, we do need to have a SEQA finding for the motion to approve the painting. And so we're recommending.
We have to have a SEQA finding even if we're postponing the windows? Because the windows are what?
Right, well, you're approving part of the project.
Oh, I see.
So we believe it would be 15301, existing facilities.
So do we need to re, do we need another, do we need to recall the previous motion and reissue a new motion? Because you can't amend a motion after it's been voted on.
Well, I think it's.
So I can move to recall the previous action? We can recall the previous action, and then we can reintroduce the motion again?
Yes.
All right, I make a motion to recall the previous action due to the inadvertent inadequacy of the motion. Can I get a second?
Second. Can I second that?
Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Microphone. Don't forget your microphone. So Commissioner Carter, are you willing to reintroduce your motion?
Yes, I'm just trying to find the right, appropriate SEQA language to add to that.
You could say that the project, the part of the project being approved tonight is categorically exempt pursuant to.
15301.
15301, existing facilities.
Do I need to restate the remainder of my motion, or can that stand as it's already been presented?
You could just refer to the, you could just refer to the previous.
Okay, I would, yeah, refer back to my previous motion and then add that we find that it is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15301.
I'll second that again, too.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
No.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that decision is technically appealable to city council, but I know you won't be doing it. Let's hope nobody else does, and then hopefully we'll see you in August. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your patience. All right, moving on then to item 12, new business, we have none. Matters from Commissioner and staff, item 13, 13.1 staff reports.
Just quickly, two items. We will be canceling our August 1st meeting due to national night out. Hopefully, all of you will be attending that in your own neighborhoods. And then I was just, just go ahead and announce that we will be having our August 29th joint city council planning commission workshop on our historic districts and the application of Secretary and Tier standards.
Do you know what time that meeting will be?
I believe it's going to start at 4:00.
4:00 PM. Okay, that's really important, yeah, 4:00 PM. Great.
Are you planning on a meeting on the 15th, right?
Yes.
15th of August?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, super. Anything else from staff?
No, I think that does it.
Planning commission matters. Anything from our special committee report? Do you want to defer till next? Go ahead, sir.
I'm going to let you do it, but the answer is, we'd like to have you put on the August 15th agenda this idea about the inventory. It's something that we're required to look at. It's in the ordinance. So all we're asking is you put on the calendar. The last discussion that you offered was very helpful. We want to hear from all of you and decide what you want to do. The short update is that it was late for the current budget process, but there's money that's going to be available, possibly in August, from COVID money. And so there'll be a formal proposal submitted to the city, and that's something you can discuss on August 15th. That's the end of it. Other than, it'd be nice if we knew who's going to be the speaker. It's a big puzzle to us. There's been a number of questions asked. We don't know from the staff who it is. I just know of who hasn't been asked, but I don't know who has been asked. That's the end of the report.
You mean at the joint?
Yeah, who the, who the consultant is that's been hired, yeah.
Who's going to be the speaker? I know some people haven't been considered, but I don't know who is on there. It'd be helpful to know.
Consultant to do the inventory?
No, the consultant on the joint workshop.
The 15th of.
On the 15th, on the 15th, and Pierre, this will be a new business item, then, as opposed to a special committee report. And it'll, and it'll be historic inventory. I'll allow Ryan or Kirk to provide perhaps specific language. You guys need to work with staff to provide the staff report, anyway. But I think that's what it'll be, it'll be.
Sort of sounds like you're asking for a discussion item, so it's a non-action item.
It will be non-action.
It'll be, it won't be a public hearing, but it'll be an action item.
An action item because we will be presenting a formal proposal outlining with specificity what money is being asked and to the dollar, every nickel that was being proposed to be spent, how it would be spent. So there'd be a specific proposal that would be made to the city and to this body before. So do they like it or not like it? What recommendations do they offer? So it would be an action item.
So I think, actually, after, after Ryan and Kirk get together with you and you guys figure out what it looks like, then you'll know where, how to treat it on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I think staff needs a little bit more information.
Right.
And probably need a, you know, a solid proposal or something.
Can you, and do you think you'll be able to put something together for August 15, gentlemen?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, great.
A written proposal.
Well, depends on how busy staff is, though. So, so actually, Kirk, if I may, basically, you're requesting at the earliest opportunity that's reasonable, given staff's workload, that we get an agenda item. We get this on the agenda as an action item, as opposed to saying it has to be on August 15. So the result of this discussion is, the special committee members are going to get together with staff, and then they'll explain what they want to do, and then we'll figure out what it's going to look like and when you can get it on the agenda.
Yes, because a lot of it would be based on whether or not we're required to give public notice.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
And just so you know, public notice for August 15th needs to go out by no later than next Wednesday.
Okay, so I don't think it's going to be August 15th. So the next reasonably available, given all factors, kind of thing. Okay, that's terrific. And again, I want to reiterate, I am very appreciative of the work that you guys have done. It's fantastic.
If it doesn't come before you on August 15th, then it may not come before the council. I mean, it's going to come for the council whenever they have this money available. And I was told by Dave Warren that it'd be sometime in August.
So I, well, I would urge you, I would urge you then, I would urge you then to get together with staff as soon as possible.
To see if it has to be noticed.
And see if, you know, if there are some time constraints, so, and we have to leave it at that.
I do think we have availability on Thursday and Friday, so, you know, send us an email, and we will work with you.
All right.
Did the staff have any comment regarding the consultant that was hired for the joint?
Yes, it's E-Corp.
E-Corp?
E-Corp.
Okay.
We just entered into the contract this week, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
If there's no other business, then we will adjourn at 10:25, which.